Thank you for joining us. It's always nice to see our finance department outside of the budget workshops, right? Thank you, and thank you for steering committee members to join us tonight, and of course, our reliable citizen watchdog Ralph and Frank. For the record, it is Tuesday, April 14th. It's a little bit after three. We'll start with roll call attendance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Zeremba?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
And Councilmember Cavanagh is absent.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
On item seven H, the resolution number is fifteen dash ten sixty-three, and with that addition, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
I motion a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Item four is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published, authorizing the clerk to attest and the mayor to sign.
Second.
I motion a second to approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Zeremba?
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Item five is under our community presentations, and we have a riveting presentation in front of us on streetlight timing.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Sean Martin from ACHD is here to give you that riveting presentation. This is, for those of you that were at the joint meeting last week, one of the topics that was on the agenda, and there wasn't much of a dialogue, so I invited Sean to come and present and answer any questions you may have about this topic. So, Sean.
Thank you, Sean, for your quick follow-up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Sean Martin like Caleb said. I'm the traffic program administrator at the highway district. It's a long title for basically saying I oversee traffic operations congestion management, which is why I guess they asked me to come and present to you. On the front page here, I don't know if you've seen this latest signal head we had. It's the one with the Facebook. We're replacing that with our red ball because that seems to be what everybody's going nowadays at the red light. We're trying to give everybody really as much time as possible to check Facebook. So we want to make those red lights. That's not really what we're trying to do.
It is illegal. I will just say that.
It's a little text and drive, not check Facebook at a red light. So there's three basic signal timing operation. Fixed mode or fixed time where the movements get pre-programmed times regardless of demand or movement. That's probably what you see in downtown Boise. Basically, you're going to give a movement forty seconds, the other one twenty seconds. It doesn't matter if anybody's there or not. That's what's going to happen every single time regardless. Isolated intersection is an individual signal that is probably about a mile away from all the other signals. The one I put here in Marin Ustick because there's not another signal within a mile on any of the other sides. So it runs based on demand that's inputted into the controller and inputting timing parameters. So you may give it min times, a maximum times. You may say it can run for a minimum time of five seconds, a maximum time of fifty seconds, and then what it's going to do is it's going to use its, we use video detection cameras mostly for vehicle detection. So if there's no other cars that are using that, it will cut off that and then go to the other street. So it's not interacting whatsoever with any of the other signals. And then we have coordinated signal operation, and that is where a series of signals that run a background cycle length and the minor movements are usually still actuated, but the major movements are guaranteed a maximum or a minimum green time. That's a long way of saying is you're trying to move traffic. You're picking one direction, and you're saying we're going to try to shove as much traffic as we can along that road. And the obvious example there is Eagle Road. We've identified Eagle Road north-south movements as a priority, so we're going to give that movement as much time as needed. It's whether there's traffic waiting on the side street, you're going to be sitting there and wait for a while. We've all experienced that. If you've ever tried to cross Eagle Road on Ustick, Fairview, Franklin. If you get there at the wrong time or the right time, you could be waiting two and a half minutes before the side was going to go. And feel free at any time to ask questions. It's probably best if it's an interactive presentation, otherwise it just gets real boring. I did add a couple slides since the Meridian Transportation Commission, based on some of their inputs and the questions they had, so I thought maybe you guys might be interested in.
And this is definitely going to make it more interesting, right?
What? Signal presentation would not be without an equation. Put this up because a lot of people ask, you know, how do you get a yellow timer? How do you get a red timer? And there's the equation. I mean, it's kind of obvious, right?
A no-brainer.
But if I can get this to work, I'll tell you what it's trying to do. What I've drawn here, that's the yellow time. You're trying to get a vehicle, what we call the dilemma zone. Imagine you're driving along and the light turns yellow. So you're always at that point of should I go or should I stop? That's what we call the dilemma zone. So at one point, so if you're anywhere along this slide, you're going to go. If you're on the other side of the line, you're supposed to stop. So we're trying to get you the yellow time that's going to allow you to safely get from this point to the stop bar. Then once you get to the stop bar by I do a code, once you're in the intersection, you're allowed to go and proceed through the intersection. So then the red time is trying to get you from the stop bar to the other side of the intersection. Hopefully that makes some sense. We do have, a typical intersection will have three time of day plans, an AM, a midday, and a PM. Others might have also a weekend plan like Fairview. If you've driven Fairview, you know that there's as much traffic on Saturday as there is on a Wednesday because of all the commercial development along there. So the AM plan may run typically from around seven AM to nine AM. Your midday plan would pick up then, and then your PM plan would start, depends on the intersection, like Eagle Road I think starts at like two thirty, but most intersections might not start until four on the PM plan.
Sean, let me interrupt you just for the record. Councilman Cavanagh has joined us at three oh seven, so. You were there just in time to hear about the dilemma zone, and that was important. Good timing, Sean.
He was in the dilemma zone. I think he already didn't know if he wanted to come in or if he wanted to stay away from this presentation.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one quick question on the last slide? The equation slide. Does your, is your equation accurate enough to account for if an individual goes through an intersection, and this happens somewhat frequently, and gets hit by a vehicle who says my light was green, your light turned, had turned red, does it account for the speed of each intersection, the speed of travel? So if you were to have crossed into an intersection after it turned red, only gone so far before it did a light turn green and could have hit you?
Correct.
Does the math account for that?
Yes.
I've always wondered how accurate.
Let me make sure I circle. So what we have is what you described is we have an all, we have an all-red movement where every movement receives a red time, so no one is moving, and that allows that vehicle, once it gets past that stop bar, to get through. So what I circle here is the all-red, and then let me just highlight, V is the speed, velocity.
So any lawful entry into an intersection because of a yellow light, you would have been able to clear the intersection prior to the other oncoming traffic getting a green?
Councilman Borton, that's correct.
But don't tell anyone.
So then why do we coordinate a signal? Coordination does have its advantages, which is basically to improve mobility and access through the air for the main corridor. And once again, that's the idea that's the main corridor. You always have to pick directions. This is what we're going to favor in lieu of the other movements. Because that main corridor is also going to have the more traffic, it's not going to be stopping as much. You should be able to reduce the vehicle accidents in the area, reduce fuel consumption, reduce number of stops, then reduce your emissions, and reduce overall delay. And I did highlight reduce on number of stops and reduce overall vehicle delay because a lot of people think, well, signal's coordinated, that means I never have to stop. Well, that's nice. That's what we want to have happen, but that's not always going to be possible regardless. So we try to reduce the number of stops and reduce the overall vehicle delay. But like anything else, it does have its disadvantages too. So what I've done here is, we get, we have an email address, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with, tell us that anybody that has an issue with the highway district, we urge you to write in. So we obviously get a lot. And signal timing is probably, it's not the number one, it's at least number two on number of complaints. But what I've done here is highlight some of the common complaints that we get. I have a red light, but no one is coming. Well, if you're on a coordinated corridor, that's exactly what's going to happen. If you're on, for instance, we just did a signal timing project on Eagle Road south of the interstate, and we had a lot of complaints from the residents at EasyJet on both sides. Because previous, in the morning, they would be able to come up, they'd set up their red light. If no one was coming on Eagle, the light would just trip, and they'd be able to go. Well, we tied those signals into coordination. So now the people that live along EasyJet, they have to come, and if they hit it at the wrong time, they could be waiting two minutes before they get a green light. So that, they weren't too happy, and they received a lot of calls on that one. It's not just the side street traffic either. It's also left-turning vehicles. If you're on Eagle Road and you're trying to turn left onto Fairview or onto Ustick, we're not going to give you as much time because that's going to take away from, like if you're going northbound on Eagle and you want to turn left on Fairview, the more time we give you to turn left, that's the less time that the southbound Eagle Road is going to have. Going against current, and what I mean by that is that travel time could actually increase if you're going against what we identified to progression. So for instance, obviously in the morning, we favor eastbound traffic, and then in the night, in the PM period, we do reverse. So then we're going to favor westbound. If you happen to be going eastbound in the PM period against the westbound traffic, your time could actually increase. The same for an interchange. We favor southbound traffic in the morning toward your interchanges because that's where people are going. They want to get on the freeway. And then conversely, on the PM period, we're going to favor traffic going northbound away from the interchanges. Lock indication is on, but there are no pedestrians. People think our push buttons must be broke because the lock light on, but there's no one crossing. But when you put a signal in coordination, you have to assume that there are going to be pedestrians there, and you have to count them for them every cycle, whether they're there or not, because actually pedestrians take longer to cross the street than vehicles do. And additional infrastructure is needed. You're going to have to have fiber interconnect or some kind of interconnect system out to all your signals. We have fiber, and then you're going to need more staff. The more complicated it is, the more staff you're going to need. My personal favorites, why can't you just add twenty more seconds? Just add twenty more seconds, I can go through. Whenever you pick a corridor, and I'll go back to Eagle Road first, for instance, you have to identify what's the critical intersection. And obviously that one, I'm assuming is probably Fairview because that's the busiest one. So first you start there, and you identify what green times you need to get traffic through there at Fairview. But the problem is when a signal's in coordination, they must run a common cycle length. So if you're running two and a half minute cycle length at Fairview, you have to run the two and a half minute at Pine, at Franklin, at River Valley, at Wainwright, at Ustick. They all have to be the same. So what may work at Fairview, for instance, might not actually work at River Valley, but you have to assume that the traffic is going to be similar. Two-way progression is difficult. You could, if all you wanted to do was just say, I'm going to make the cars go northbound. You could do that, but that's, southbound then is going to be more difficult if you don't give them just as much consideration. And that's kind of the swimming against progression again. The signal should be evenly spaced. So most of the signals, I would say in any kind of, obviously we have the mile grid pattern, and then we do have a lot of half-mile signals, and we could deal with those. The signals that we have problems dealing with are your, on your interchange ramp signals because those are closely spaced. Or like when you have a signal like at Hubble Creek on Eagle Road, it's actually a third mile south of Chinon. So all your signals on Eagle Road are a half mile, and then you get to Hubble Creek, and now that one's at a third mile. Signal preemption by emergency vehicles creates problems. I want to go back to Eagle Road again since that's everybody's favorite child. St. Luke's being right there. There's probably an ambulance or a police or a fire probably interrupting those signals every like fifteen minutes or so. So once a signal's interrupted and it has to get back into cycle, and that could take up to five minutes or so just to get back into cycle. Vehicles must be able to go to post the speed limit. If your road waves over capacity, or if your speed limit is not set proper, because we put a, when we do signal coordination, we are going to do it to the speed limit. So if you can't go to speed limit, then you're going to have a problem. Like, I'll go to my commute, I live in North Meridian, but you know, you guys know where the highway district is, so I go on Chinon every morning, and ITD went in and they increased the speed limit to fifty, which was great, except it seemed like every morning I have two cars going forty-five right next to each other, and the signals aren't coordinated for fifty, so I'm stuck behind them. So sure enough, I know what's going to happen because I'm not going fifty. I'm going to get stopped at the next red light. Makes me want to.
At every one of them.
At every one of them. Now, transition of coordination plans during the day causes disruption. I showed you the different timing plans. There's an AM, a midday, a PM. When that change happens, it's going to take a couple minutes for those signals to change their offsets and change their splits and their cycle lengths. So you're going to have about a ten-minute period where you could, we get a lot of complaints like in downtown Boise. I was there at nine-thirty in the morning, and I was traveling Ninth Street. Well, that's just right when our plans are changing. So obviously, we try to do those. We don't try to do them in the peak periods, but no matter what, we're going to do them, like at nine-thirty in the morning, somebody's going to be there. Here's another diagram for you, Mayor. I figured, what am I going to want? So, let me see if I can explain this one right. Early return to green, so what do you see here is a time-space diagram? And if you don't have enough traffic on your side street, what's going to happen? It's going to terminate that phase and go back to the main movement to give you a green. Well, that sounds great. I get an early return to green. I can go, but what happens is, signal coordination, when it lets you go early, you're just going to get stopped at the next light, and you're going to get a red light. So if I could draw a line here. What it shows here is a typical, you're on a green light, you get a, and by the time you get to the next light, it's going to be go green too. However, right here is your red light for your main, your side street. If your side street doesn't use all of its green time, it's going to let you go early, so you're going to leave here. So what happens when you leave, you go to the next intersection, now you're at a red. Now you're having to wait. So if your side streets actually don't have enough, it's going to let you go early. We're trying to reduce overall delay, so one good thing, you don't have to sit there and wait, because if you sit there and wait, let me get those calls. I'm sitting there and waiting, and no one's coming, why am I doing that? Well, so we let you go early, and now it's, well, now I'm having to stop. Why am I having to stop? It's supposed to be coordinated. I did mention that pedestrian crossing times often dictate green times, and this is just a sample. So we time our pedestrian signals to walk at three and a half feet per second. A five-lane facility is about, we'll just use off the charge, about eighty foot wide. So eighty foot wide at, is that right? At three and a half feet per second, it's going to take that pedestrian twenty-three seconds to walk across the street. Now, if you're on a street that doesn't have that much vehicles, but you have to account for the pedestrians, the vehicles mainly need fifteen seconds of green, but you have to count for twenty-three seconds every time. So that goes back to why is the headlight on? There's no one there. So what we did actually on some of the signals on Eagle Road is we didn't account for pedestrians every single time on coordination. So if a pedestrian comes along and hits the button, they'll still get the walk light, and they'll still get their time to cross, but it's going to knock the signals out of coordination because we just simply couldn't account for pedestrians crossing every single time, because let's be honest, there's not a pedestrian crossing Eagle Road every single cycle. But in downtown Boise, in your downtown here, probably is a pedestrian crossing just about every single cycle. That's just, that's some theory and some, just some background. Now we'll kind of get more into what we've done here in Meridian. We do time our signals. We have about, what, three hundred and forty traffic signals, you want to say thereabouts? We try to retime those on a five-year rotating basis. We zone out the county, and every year we go and pick which ones we're going to do. We do hire consultants to help develop those plans with oversight from us, and in Meridian, we last retimed your signals in twenty-fourteen, and there were the forty-two of them, and I'll show you which forty-two there were. I put up a map, transportation given ahead in words. It makes it easier for a map. So basically, it's your signals along Ten Mile. That's your west boundary, and I did say we did this section of Eagle Road here as the east boundary. This is Fairview and Cherry. Their top boundary, and then Overland Road from, that's from Stoddard to Silverstone, and then your downtown core here on Main, Meridian. And we waited till after the Slick Border Project was done, so we did those. And then also a piece of Franklin Road from your downtown to Locust Grove. Then these other signals along Linder. Because here, there's no line in between them. We did put in new timings, but if you go back to what I was saying in the beginning, we treated those as isolated signals. They're there. They're not really talking to each other. So if you're on, part of the problem is of course the railroad crossing along Linder. It's hard to coordinate a railroad, or Linder, when you have a railroad crossing with stop sign. Maybe once we get that section of Linder here widened, we can go back and coordinate those as well. And the percentages that you see here are the travel time reductions that we experienced. So maybe just an example, on Ten Mile Road, northbound, we were able to reduce travel time fifteen percent, and that's over a course of a day. Southbound, seven percent. You can see the rest of them. So it was thirty percent northbound, six percent southbound. What does that mean? You're able to reduce travel time, delay, and stops. These were some before and after studies we did. We go out and we drive the corridors before, seeing how long it takes us to travel, how, how many times we get delayed, or how many stops we have. And then we go back after we put in the timings, and we do the same. So you can see the reductions here in travel time, delay, and stops. Current issues and efforts we're having in Meridian. Meridian interchange construction's creating quite a challenge. We're consistently monitoring that, making adjustments as we can. I should say, and this goes back to the construction before, after, during, it don't really matter. Anytime we have interchanges, our number one goal on an interchange when you do signal timing is to keep people from backing down the ramps and onto the interstate. We would rather you stack and have queues on your overpass, over your structure, rather than having you stick out onto a freeway with people going sixty-five mile an hour by you. So we're going to favor your, your off-ramps on an interchange, specifically now during construction, but really anytime. IAD four construction, traffic is shifting to other east-west roads. People don't want to sit there and wait in line, so we've seen increases pretty much Victory, Overland, Franklin, Fairview, Chinon, Highway forty-four. You pick an east-west route, it's seen additional traffic. We have added some closed-circuit TV cameras of Franklin and Linder, and Franklin and Ten Mile, to help us monitor the traffic to make adjustments. And we are looking at some possible dynamic message signs on arterial roads, installing them this, here. We're looking at Eagle Road, Ten Mile, and Meridian, all kind of near the interchanges. There is something new we're trying, called adaptive signal control, and it's supposed to be a lot more flexible than a standard signal control. It adjusts the timings of the red, yellow, and green lights to accommodate changing traffic patterns, will automatically adapt to unexpected changes. Before, you would always go in and you'd base your green times on what traffic you think is going to be there based on historical counts. This, we're supposed to be able to use our video detection camera. So if it sees a surge, it will add that twenty seconds of green time that people are asking for. The next cycle, it may take that twenty seconds back away from you. And that's what I mean when I can continuously distribute green time proportion and number of vehicles and waiting time. So if it does see a longer queue than normal, it's going to give you more green time. We are trying that, and here's the corridors we're trying along right now. It's the Chinon, Highway forty-four, Eagle Road, and Glenwood. In that box area, there's, I want to say there's about twenty-some signals in there. And we're evaluating that right now. There is a project in the works between us and ITD then to extend the adaptive signal along Eagle Road from Chinon back all the way down to the interstate. Okay, I think this is my last slide. Nope, not one. They did want me to speak briefly about Main, Meridian, Fairview, because I think that's one of the ones that came up at the joint meeting, and this is going to get complicated, but I'll try to do my best.
It looks clear as day.
Yeah, I know, doesn't it? So this is, once again, this is a time-space diagram. The green is your green time. The red is when you're stopping. So if this direction going to the top, this is westbound, so if you start from the bottom and go to the top, you're going westbound. If you're going from the top down to the bottom, you're going eastbound. Now, there is a period, just based on, I'm going to draw on here, if you were sitting right here, and that's Main Street going westbound, and you got a green light, you're going to go, and you're going to hit a green light also at Meridian Road until you get to this point right here. So if you're one of the first cars in line at Main Street, you are going to hit a red light at Meridian. However, if you're going eastbound, you get a red light here, go through, and you're also going to, you're supposed to be able to get a green light at Main Street. The problem is why you're getting a red light going the other way when you're going westbound. You have to start, and you have to look all the way back here. And the Transportation Commission, I actually, I thought Locust Grove was running by itself, but it's actually running as part of the system as well. We're trying to get the traffic from Locust Grove actually, a mile back, and trying to get them. Trying to get them all the way through the intersection as well. You can see that's what this line is. They're leaving Locust Grove and they're getting a green light at Lakes. And they're coming to Main Street getting a green light. And then they're getting a green light at Meridian. And that's why, if you're, if you didn't come from Locust Grove, if you came from one of the side streets or the driveways or Burger King or any of those, that much from so long there, and you're at Main Street, you're gonna get a red light at Meridian. Cause then you could see the difference between red light here and the red light here. There's more traffic on Meridian Road than there is on Main Street at this time. So we're having to account for more traffic on Meridian and that's why you're stopping. But if you ever come into a situation and you wanna know why am I stopping or what's going on, the best thing to do is always note which direction you're going and the time of the day. Because if you give us that information, then we'll, I'll be able to go to the guys that really know what they're going, and then ask them. And then I can teach you an answer. Yeah. Uh, to, hopefully it wasn't too tall in traffic like I love you with a heart team. But if you have any questions, I'll be certainly glad to have, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Sean. Counsel, any questions?
Adam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Roundtree.
Sean, you talked about the adaptive signal control. What kind of investment does that take? Can you do it with your existing controllers or all new technology?
Your existing controllers, but it does require another box, basically, for you to put in there. And depending on which vendor you select, like we, we selected Rhythm Engineers, their NSYNC system. And they want you to really use their cameras as well, which is creating us problems. But it was, I wanna say about thirty thousand dollars in intersection. If you do twenty, that's obviously six hundred thousand. So it's not cheap.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Counsel? Think you made it clear as day.
I don't know. I might have went to the water, but it's, it's not, it's not easy and it's not even sometimes even easier to discuss.
Well, we appreciate you, you coming and sharing that, Sean. I, I think it did really help understand that the sooner you allow us to move might screw up the rest of the trip. So, um, now I know that. So when I'm sitting there cursing you, I know one day you'll love me.
Right. Or, or you could curse the cars in front of you for not going to the speed limit.
Yeah.
Adam Mayor.
Yes.
I do, I do have a quick question. Um, so do they either, do they have to be one way or the other? Is that what it understands? Do they either have to be, um, coordinated, timed, or active, uh, motion activated?
Yeah, there's, there's coordinated or the other one where it's a little more responsive. We use the video detection cameras and it will be more responsive to you, yes.
But is one way or the other?
Yes.
And can you put them, uh, can you, do they have to stay the same or can you have certain ones, uh, be coordinated during the weekdays, but maybe activated on weekends?
Yes, you could change that up. Doesn't have to be coordinated all the time. We will take signals out of coordination at nighttime, you know, like even Eagle Road, I wanna say like around ten or eleven. They're not gonna be uncoordinated, they're gonna be more responsive. So, yes, there is periods where we used to call, we call it free operation at that point, where they're not coordinated. Now they do, we just allow the video detection cameras to cycle it around.
Hey, well, thank you again for, for sharing that.
Thank you.
And we had, uh, Finance follow you to say yours wasn't the dry one. Oh, sorry.
It was a short one.
Okay, our strategic update from our finance department.
Well, um, it, I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing to follow, but I am gonna skip around to different topics, so hopefully you won't lapse into a coma in the next twenty minutes. Okay, this is the finance department. I brought most of them in and told them they were gonna be asked to say a few words, which they all got sweaty palms, but not really. I'm not gonna ask them to say anything. But I, if you have questions, everybody's here and ready to answer questions about their area. So, this is the organizational chart that we just produced for you. This is the finance department. We, in the last couple of years, have reorganized a bit. We kinda went backwards and we flattened our organization. Turned out that really nobody needed to be managed so much, so kinda flattened it out and, and do a team approach. I'm gonna go back for a minute and talk about where we left off a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about budgeting, um, transparency, accountability. I'm gonna talk a little bit about something called the Governmental Accounting Standard Board Concept Statement Number One, which addresses exactly what we were talking about. So concept statements are not standards in that they're not mandated, they're strongly recommended. So, this concept governs how we account and report. It's our financial reporting standards. And there's two main standards or two main concepts. Accountability and inter, inter-period equity. So inter-period equity, and this is their wording, I wouldn't talk like this personally, but is that government should pay for current services with current resources and not, not postpone payment to burden future budgetary periods. So that's something that's very unique to government accounting and sometimes, and budgeting and sometimes makes it hard for people to understand the way we do things, the way we do. So I'm gonna answer, count, I'm gonna answer Councilman Zerim's budget workshop question now. And that's why we keep reapproving the budget every year, including the capital. So it's also why you all meet with the mayor and your departments and you literally go through line by line items. So you're, you don't wanna do that in a workshop, 'cause we didn't live that long. That's basically what we're doing. We're, we have to reapprove the whole entire budget every year. That's where you get into the concept of carry forward, why we use that term, carry forward. We're literally reappropriating it, reappropriating every line item. So then accountability, that's what we were talking about a little bit a couple of weeks ago. So that's kinda the cornerstone of financial reporting. That's the statement or the concept that governments accountable for public resource, resources to provide public services and their primary constituent is the citizens. So reporting format, I'm gonna talk about this just briefly. I'm gonna go back to the funds again, because we, we talked a little bit about that last week. And I found myself in the last couple of weeks trying to explain the concept of a fund and not doing very well. So I'm not sure that this will clear it up any better, but a fund is established due to diverse nature of governmental operations and the need for legal compliance. So a governmental fund, well, we're always talking about governmental funds and enterprise or proprietary funds. So a governmental ref- fund, the reporting focuses, is on determining the financial position and changes in financial position rather than on determining net income. So we have, I, here's some that we have, general fund, capital improvement fund, the impact fee fund. Proprietary funds are used to account for activities that are similar to business operations of private sector or when the reporting focus is on determining net income, financial position, and changes in cash flow. So that s- that statement, that change in cash flow is a pretty major part of the audited financial statements. An exercise to determine that the entity is liquid. So, and we just have one, the water and sewer utility. So, we have this fund level. And the, the big thing here is that the format that we use is universal. So that any, almost anybody can look at it for any entity and it will make sense, it will be comparable. For example, even companies that wanna relocate, relocate here, they will look at the financial health of whatever locality they're relocating in. Cause that can affect stability of services, quality of life, what ha- how. So then we come down. So functions are those big rollups that you see. We have, so we have water, sewer, fire, police, parks, admin, and community development. Big rollups, that's what we usually talk about. What we give you in your council statements, what we usually levelly report at. Then we drop down lower and we go to the level of program. So we, that's a, that's a, a subset of a function. And we use it for what we call departments. So in the accounting structure, when you look at your accounting, financial statements, we typically, in city lingo, the departments are those what we call functions. But with, in accounting, it's all those subsets within the financial statements. And this might possibly be interesting, because if you're looking for a piece of information, if you know the department, you can drill down further. You don't have to read through five hundred lines of data or look at that big rolled-up statement. So departments are important for directors and managers because they can see information at a small level. We or I don't like it so much because we're getting more and more tables of data to manage. And you can, we lose comparability over time. And you can't, it's like you're looking at this, just tons of trees and not the forest. But here's, we have like sixty departments. So part of the reason I'm showing you this is you can sympathize with Todd or with the county when they're, we're doing the financial statements or taking all this data and rolling it up. This is kinda what they deal with. Again, it's helpful to know this if you just wanna know something about the wastewater treatment plant lab and you don't wanna dig through the entire enterprise fund statement to figure it out. So then I'm gonna go, we're gonna switch off that, so that's concept. Now, when we look at, this is back to that higher level rollup. So I just pull, we talked last couple of weeks ago, we talked about revenue. I've switched over here and talk about, uh, our expense side. So I, we just completed this. We're in the process of right now, building the FY sixteen budget. So we're looking back and this is how we look in F to E camp. So we look at that high-level rollup and look at the total number, there's just some comparisons here. Changing employees over five years, changing employees from year to year, et cetera. So this gives you, as we go into the budget and we look at revenue and we decide, how much is our revenue gonna be? Are we gonna take the property tax, are we not? We, we start planning that, well, how much growth can we reasonably expect the ci- in the city, given the level of growth in development? This kinda tells you, you know, what you're gonna be looking at in the future. So hot off the press today, breaking news, the FY sixteen general fund base personnel operating's at five point five percent and enterprise is at five point three, six percent. So both about five percent. So I'm gonna drill down and get down into my department. So in general administration, we always talk about, here's administration. Well, that's actually twelve departments. So it's a very diverse group of departments and it's kind of hard really to make conclusions or do analysis on that number, administration, without looking at all the different functions within it. That's cumbersome. We don't wanna give you every report we give you that's got all these twelve departments listed. Some of them are very small. So I'll just, you can look at this, over time, you can see all the different departments that make up administration. So in total, there're fourteen, this is for the fifteen budget, fourteen percent of the total city, total cities budgeted FTEs. Finance, human resources, IT, and legal are just like fifty, fifteenth, the enterprise fund. Other government is, it's kind of a different animal. It's where very, 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 very general things go. So we have two people in there. We have the construction manager who works for both the enterprise fund, the general fund, and then the communications coordinator. That's also where we have like our city dues and just different items that can't be really traced to one department in particular. So I just think kinda like commercial development, when, when the functions or the primary programs increase, eventually the support staff has to increase too. I'm gonna switch completely and talk about utility billing. Has to be blue and orange because they are just like rabid BSU fans. Don't ever go in there on a Friday during game time, you'll be blinded by the orange. So utility billing is actually funded all through the enterprise fund, but is managed in reports to finance. We've had kind of a, a whole year this year because we've had a couple of internal promotions. And through, throughout here, I put the number of years of staff, 'cause it's unusual that we've had, we have, we don't have an old staff, we have a staff that's been here a long time. So billing manager Carrie, she's been here sixteen years. Then we have two promotions, billing administrator two and billing administrator one, which I left out. Maria's been here twelve years and it's too bad she's not here, 'cause I can hunt her out. So Maria actually started as a temp and worked her way up. We had the person who was doing this job left over the weekend without notice. And a couple of weeks later, we noticed, oh, Maria's doing the job, so it kinda seems like a good fit. Then we had a chance to promote Cody, who's been here seven years, into the backup from Maria. So those two gals do all the primary functions to get the bills out first and then. Peter is our lonely mug's male and he does property ownership transfers. So he's kind of, and everybody here is prostring, so any one of these people can jump up, take over the lobby, take over whatever position. So these are their primary positions. Accounting clerk, front desk, we have Ev, she's been here ten years. Ev is kind of the serene person in the crowd. You could spray an AK forty-seven around her and she'd just sit there and say, can I help you? Barbara Davidson, she's been here six years and she is just now taking over property management or third-party billings that Cody previously did. So new opportunity for her that she jumped up and took over. And then we have a new person, Vicky Silvers, who's been here one day. So she started yesterday. She actually worked for the city before, for Carrie. So addressing and assessments, I believe Carrie said. And it turns out she and Barbara graduated from the same high school, the same year, from the city in California.
Wow.
So there you go. A little bit about what they do and a little bit of benchmarking. So these are extra services, just some things that we track. Service disconnect, property management billing and payment arrangements. Each person ha- each of those has payment arrangements and property management billing that I showed to the people who primarily do that. Then our payment types, online payment, counterpayment, pay by phone. And one thing we noticed, or I noticed, is how come our phone calls and counterpayments are going down, but we're still increasing the number of counts? I mean, why do we need all these people? We don't need all these people. And Carrie wisely pointed out that, that we spend time on quality control before the bills go out. So a lot of what everybody's doing, and it's the whole staff, after that meter read, they're reconciling the bills. And we did the billing, of course, for Republic Services too. So everyone in the department is working on reconciliation. That means when the bill goes out, the bill is more likely to be right and people don't have to call us and complain or come in. So we still have a lot of direct customer contact. We have people that come in and pay over the counter. They just, they like to do that. And we have, of course, a lot of phone calls. Well, one of the big, well, the big project for utility billing is this replacement of the software system. So it's time for, for an update on the progress of that project. Kinda put here a timeline together of what we've done and where we're going. Up at the top, you see the cost. Our original budget request was in FY fourteen and for seven hundred and ten thousand. It looks like the cost will be six hundred and eighteen thousand. And then the maintenance will be about five thousand more than we actually budgeted. So, pretty close. Some of the, some of the, where the cost was are off a little bit, but overall, we're pleased. The project looks like it'll come in at or just under cost. So in what we went through, So in what we went through, we started out by trying to define our requirements and we, we hired a firm called Moss Adams, who, their closest office is in Portland. They worked with finance, billing, public works, IT, water and community development to start developing requirements. During this process, we knew we needed a project manager and we were gonna use someone in IT who left. So we ended up contracting with a firm called Experius, Cheryl, which I believe you all met her in November as a project manager. Well, it turned out, we were able to terminate Moss Adams services earlier than the original contract, weren't quite doing what we wanted, not quite as responsive as we wanted, so we ended up terminating that and saved a little money on that. So we, we released the RFP August twelfth with two thousand and fourteen, with all that technical, all those requirements, functional requirements, vendor profile references and costs. We had seven responses, narrowed down to two. Now, this sounds easy when I read it, but not so much. It's very time consuming, you're always gathering people back together, hold the meeting and plow through all this. So we ended up with one, selecting one vendor, TruePoint, I, the software's called TrueBill, for an onsite visit. We sent an evaluation team with billing, water and IT and they visited one of the, a primary user, Sacramento Suburban Water District. And, okay, billing did not complain, water and IT complained about the quality of their location and their accommodations, which I did not choose, Cheryl chose those. But they survived, they all came back alive and determined that this was the out-of-the-box solution that would meet their requirements. So December tenth, two thousand and fourteen, we, we announced the selection, started contract negotiations. So again, that goes through a whole long process of going through the contract negotiation. Um, it turned out that we had a slight change in scope because it turned out, it, that, it turned out that the system would do something water hadn't necessarily been planning to use it for, dealing with meter inventory. So it was something they could do much ea- more easily in this software than the way they were originally gonna do it. So it, I think the difference was like less than twenty-five thousand, even that much. Cheryl, let everybody have a break, over the holidays. So then February tenth, you approved the, the contract for the software per- purchase. The implementation is scheduled from February two thousand and fourteen, fifteen to January two thousand and sixteen, so almost a year. March sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth, we had the kickoff and they started, started the training and workshops. First part of May, they'll be here for production, training, baseline installation and then Cheryl's listed all the other steps, I'm not gonna read them to you, that will follow. Basically sitcom, we're on for Target as of this week, that we will meet that January twenty, twenty sixteen Target. Okay, now we're gonna skip out of here, I should ask if there's any questions about that project before I go on.
Questions from council? I think you've been very good at keeping us in the loop on it.
Okay, so we're gonna skip, we're gonna go to the purchasing department. This is one of, we've got a couple of different projects here to talk about. So this is a area where growth, city growth, has definitely been a challenge for us. We have two employees, one who's been here nine years and eight years. Keith, who's the president of Idaho, the Idaho Public Purchasing Association. And I mention this because both of these people have been very involved in getting outside training. In particular, Kathy, she's an hourly employee, she does this on her own time outside of work. She's the vice president of the Idaho Public Purchasing Association and will be the president, which she said occurred in a-
I see you have a coup.
She said it occurred in a weak moment, but too late now. So it's, it's purchasing and like, if Ted were here at the Nye's Head, is complex and time intensive. So a lot of the law is because somebody abused something, so somebody made a law to correct it and then somebody did something else, so somebody else makes another law and it just like mushrooms. So this is a quote I found, it's, it's not just government, it's everybody. So this is from a, um, magazine on procurement and it, it says, procurement fraud is the second most frequently reported form of economic crime behind asset misappropriation. And it just talks about procurement fraud and then it's most common at the vendor selection stage, followed by the bid process. And then it lists some of the sectors that report the most fraud, so government, energy, utilities, mining, engineering, construction, transportation, logistics, which is kinda like everything. So as, as you probably know, the state's working on revamping purchasing laws, they've had a few sticky wickets. So maybe this'll solve everything, a little skeptical, but. So it's, we looked at, why are we so busy? Are we just not efficient? We use case management, we streamline procedures, we, we know where our project is. So if you look, if you look at the growth in the city, above on that graph just shows bids, RFPs, RFQs, it, it groups the different functions and you can see it's just, it's mushroomed and a, this, this is applicable for legal too, because they're kinda the endpoint after us. Now, another way to look at it is, well, how much are we spending on construction? So just in three years, we, we went from spending nine point three million dollars to spending almost twenty-five million dollars, this is in a year. So all that goes through a big RFP, RFQ bid process. And then another thing we looked at that's time consuming is, well, how much have we spent on professional services? So in five years, we spent almost sixteen million dollars on professional services. So one, one thing it's important to note is that purchasing does not write specifications, the specifications come from the department. It would be great if they knew everything about everything and could write the spec- specifications, but they don't. So they facilitate the process of moving, departments give them through the final contract.
Mr. Board.
Purple? That's the agreements. Oh, yeah, doesn't show up. So if I, I think, I don't, I'm not sure, the graph doesn't drop down enough. I think it's another category, but I'll look it up and let you know. So we've got all this purchasing going on and we're creating all these contracts and we have all of this information funnels to one account's payable person who needs to pay the payments on the contracts and they need to be accurate because when it comes to show up and it's not, it's the finance department who gets a ding on the audit report. Plus, we wanna pay in accordance with the contract. So we also, at year end, we have to report on all the outstanding contracts for, to the auditors, it's called the commitment list. And we've just had contracts and agreements roaming around the city for years. And finally, Rita, who gets to put together the commitment list and manage accounts payable, she's just like, I'm done, we gotta do something about this. So this is Todd's call. What we did or what we didn't.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good to see you.
Nice to see you, Todd.
So Stacey was stating, um, Rita was tired of dealing with the contracts, asking questions about the audit. And a number of things have occurred over years that made us ask the question, how can we fix it? We would have, you know, projects going on that we would have a check request to make final payment, we would ask the project manager, has all the requirements of the contract been satisfied? And would find that the contract was still in question, unknown if the requirements were satisfied. Well, um, we found out that insurance was due on a certain item, or property payments were due. And not, you know, we, we found that the contracts were not being managed to the best. So we tried to find an efficient, effective way for the city to manage the numerous contracts that we all have. You see them on a weekly basis, there's just thousands of contracts out there with the numerous departments that we have. So May two thousand and thirteen, we presented to you guys that we would try to develop a contract management database in-house. I'm happy to tell you that we have successfully, successfully developed the program. May first, we'll be releasing it to a select group of employees with the help of IT, Nick Fairs and Mike Tanner. This entire program is developed in-house. The project team, in this case, is Kathy Warner, we have Keith Watts, we have Rita Cunningham, Nick Fairs was our lead IT project or program manager. We have Karen Muddell, I'm not sure if everybody's met Karen Muddell yet, but, uh, she's actually gonna be the contract management administrator. She's gonna be in charge of trying to input hundreds of contracts we improve every year. She's going to input these into the database. Eventually, we'd like to have it automated, but right now, we have one person that's gonna manage this. Kathy has that, okay, Karen has that daunting task to manage all these contracts in this database. Uh, it's not gonna just be contracts, it's gonna be agreements, it's gonna be reimbursement agreements as well. Again, the database is gonna try to help the user, be it the council members or any city staff employee, to be able to access online data regarding a contract. Be it the milestone, the start date, the execution date, when it stops, when it starts, does a contract have requirements like insurance? Does it have a requirement to, you know, um, have tax information submitted? Hopefully, this database will be a one-stop shop for all city employees and council members to access so that if there's ever a question on a contract, you can go to this one central location and have the contract in front of you with the pertinent information. Legal's gonna be a very large user in this, they're gonna help us out a lot in the future on future advancement and development of this program. Again, uh, we're, we're hoping that it's gonna be a, a great tool for the city, it's gonna help finance out. Manusly over the, over the years and being able to answer the question, what contracts do we have outstanding? This is just a quick snapshot of just the various amounts of data that we're going to collect on behalf of the contracts for all city employees to use. Being that this is developed in-house, Nick Fairs up in IT is working with Mike Tanner and we're going to have this product actually work with, in conjunction with the project that is going on in engineering division. Right now, Mike and Nick are working with the engineers to develop a new project management software program. And given that they're both developed in-house, all the projects will have an associated contract. So we have a contract management database, so now they'll be able to talk amongst each other, since we've developed them in-house, we have the same language, we'll be able to share, share the data on the fly, on the go. So anybody wants to know a contract, they can go to the project, or if anybody wants to see a project, they can go to the contract. Again, using the resources we have upstairs, it'll be a great, great synergy between the two programs. Again, as I stated, our goal is to release this to a select group of individuals on May first, we're gonna have the training session officially on April twenty-ninth. We're gonna use, hopefully use word of mouth and some other trainings, uh, in the future to release this to all employees, any staff members that have an interest, have a need, have a use for this program. Again, future development of this database is gonna work with legal a lot. We're gonna hopefully utilize the function of, as we do data input into Word or Adobe, it'll automatically fill in the database so that Karen doesn't have to retype all the data again. It can now help remove some of the errors in typing. Again, as I explained, the Public Works Engineering Division, their project, these two are gonna work in conjunction, they're gonna talk to each other. So I think it's just gonna really, really work in the positive for the citizen, for the city staff members to be able to access the contracts on a daily basis at your fingertips. If you're out in the field, you'll have access to it there as well. So again, the project is, uh, almost done, it's almost released, we only have a couple of weeks left. But I'm happy to say, with all the great work that Kathy, Karen, Rita, Nick, Keith, Mike, I mean, we, we put a lot of time in this, it's a hundred percent in-house, we didn't outsource any of it. We worked with Public Works, legal, other departments fired to get input on the way this was gonna lay out. So I think at the end of the day, I think everybody's gonna be happy with the product. And I'm happy to answer any questions, it's been a year since I've given you an update. I stand here to answer any questions if you have any.
Council, any questions? So we look forward to the launch.
Okay, hang in there, we're getting close. So I'm gonna switch down and talk about the accounting department, are those dedicated to accounting, our accounting assets. This is the department that Rita is the captain of, captain of the Starship Enterprise, Rita has been here nineteen years, she's our controller. Our senior accountant, Jenny, just received a promotion, well, in the last few months. She's been here six years and she is now our senior accountant at all of thirty-one years old, so we like calling her senior. Then as, as, as Todd mentioned, Karen is our new employee, you gave us a new position a year ago. So Karen's been here actually almost a year. We kind of stole her or lucked on her, we're lucky. She has thirty years project management at Hewlett Packard and six years at the City of Boise managing grant, grants and accountants, grants and accountants, grants and contracts. So we try to be like really charming and fun when we do interviews and, and find people like this who are willing to come to work for us and are, are great, as I said, new assets. Then we have another new position, Courtney, I'm not gonna try to say her last name in the massacre, but she's been with us three, um, I don't know. Yeah, that's already. So she was another good friend, she was, wanted to move here from Jerome. She was controller at Dawn's Irrigation, which actually, she, she was there for seven years and that's a, somebody who's selling those big agriculture priv- private systems. So she's got experience in every area, she's been great, so we're excited to have her on our team, already asking, what can I do, I'm ready to do more. And payroll, Barb has been here thirteen years, Barb has a new name, Barb is now-
I noticed that, what is that?
I know. Barb got married last fall, so she's now Barb Knoll. So Barb is like a priceless diamond, everybody always is very nice to Barb because we know what she does for us, as one person handling payroll. Then we have another new employee, our arts and culture specialist. So Hillary has actually been here seven years, seven years and she's twenty-four years old. So talk about getting some longevity. So she's very excited, this fits exactly with her degree and what she wants to do and, and she won't stay in the finance department forever, but for right now, we're feeling very left-brained and glad that we have a chance to enjoy this function for a while. So as Todd explained, when we, when you gave us a new position and we restructured everything, Karen is in charge of Karen feeding of the contract database. She also reconciles accounts payable, does cash receipts, which I'm gonna talk a little bit about cash too, and what every new employee does, the grant accounting. Jenny does, she's like, does eight thousand things, like anything you want done, Jenny does it. You wanna org chart, Jenny does it. You wanna know the cost of three-step plan in three hours, Jenny does it. So she, she's doing the monthly financial reports that you get, that I used to do, she does that now. Lot of special projects, does all the work with Excel because that all feeds into accounting for the cash, she just, you want it done, ask Jenny. I just had to make a little comment about the ugly thing, Marion Heights, a manual, three hundred and twenty item, twenty-year payment, accounts receivable thing. So Jenny does that, so. Hopefully, our new, utility billing software will do that. I, utility billing deals with it a lot too, so, so to say. So our goal, as we restructured, reorganized, besides trying to deal with that big risk area of contracts, our goal is to make more room for analysis, do fiscal impact statements, do fee documentation, cost policy options, internal control reviews, just keep doing more of those special type of projects. I wanna talk about another function that takes a lot of time that you probably, people don't think about a lot, and when you, I'm, cause I'm sure you spend a lot of time thinking about what accounting does. So cash management is an extremely big part of all of our daily function on the accounting side. So, cash management is an extremely big part of all of our daily function on the accounting side. Cash comes in from a zillion trillion sources. It has to go to the right account and it has to go to the bank. We have several different bank accounts and funds that it has to be moved in between. So, we have four people that work on cash daily. Carrie and Karen spend their morning reconciling cash from the day before. So, I know this is totally illegible, but the one on the top is an example of the general fund reconciliation for one day. So, cash, it's mostly billing department is coming in, it's going through Exela. That's what Karen is reconciling. And then, the one below is just a tiny piece of the month reconciliation that Carrie does. So, like I said, every morning, those cash reconciliations are done. Then, Barb is also checking the bank department, bank statement, because we get some money that comes in as an EFT, so she's got to check that. Month in, Todd balances the bank accounts. I was going to, I said manages bank, it's really, the technical term is manage our bank relationships, which that kind of sounds funny, but what it means is he has a relationship with people at the bank, the corporate customer service people. So, we're opening, closing credit card accounts, we're changing limits and so forth. Rita also has a lot to do with that too. Then, Rita and I have to make sure that the checking accounts have enough money to cover the checks we write. Plus, we also want to move it, which I'll talk about a little bit. We want to move it into the most opportune spot for it to live, to generate whatever little penny of interest it can. So, again, where does cash live? So, these are all the different accounts where it lives. It lives in four funds and every fund, well, not every fund, most of them have all these individual accounts. All those accounts have different interest rates and their interest rates depend on the longevity of the investment, what the market's doing, et cetera. So, our goal is to meet our daily cash needs, but also to maximize interest. So, when we look at where we're going to move money, we don't, we don't do it on what the budget says or what the execution rates are supposed to do or anything else. We do it completely based on judgment of how much we think we're going to spend. So, that, this area really is an experience area where you're just like on the fly. How much are we going to, how much are our accounts payable going to be? What's payroll? What are we going to spend on construction? And then, we try to move money to maximize our interest. So, I really think we do a good, a pretty good job in this area. We have an extremely fast cash turnover. If you just look at utility billing, from the day we read the meter to the cash in the bank is 35 to working days. I'm telling you, most businesses would kill for that, that is fast. So, we have a couple of vendors we work with, we expect, we squeeze them, I mean, we are hard for them. One of them is the bank. So, every time the bank of the cascade emerges, well, they haven't done it the last merger, but they would come over and say, we really need to start charging you fees. And we say, no, I really don't think so, we're not going to pay fees. So, we do a lot of negotiation on how much money we'll keep in there overnight to avoid, to make them happy enough to feel like we're not completely pinching them to death. And we also work with an investment advisor who purchases bonds and CDs. And we've got this, you know, we pay a fee for that, but we're going, no, we're paying more in fees and we're making an interest. So, we've been moving a lot of money into the Idaho bond fund and the pool. The other day, we said, did you notice we're moving money? He goes, yeah, but it would be irresponsible if you didn't. So, I said, well, how about if you lower your, our investment rate? And they did, so, good deal, we're paying less for that. So, again, we're really, we're layering out over 10 years. So, we're investing over a 10-year horizon. So, if, I'm sure you want to know more about cash. In the audit, there's a big footnote disclosure on cash investments because there's all kinds of regulations and rules and, and we have a status and a policy on how much, how fast our portfolio turns over and what interest rate, what investment rate we're going to take. So, we're going to go back, this is the last part, we're going to go back to the budget again. I wrote Todd in really big letters because he's the budget department. Therefore, he doesn't have a lot of, you know, he'll take a lot of room on his page, on his page. Todd's been here eight years and then I help him a little bit. I've been here 14 years. So, here's, here's some of the projects that we have going in budget, besides just cranking out the budget. I retired from the Impact Fee Committee and Todd and Ted now do it, doing a great job. They've been meeting quarterly. Each meeting, they've had a different department come in and meetings have been well-attended, so I think that's going well. The revenue manual, this is like the coolest thing ever, this is my favorite thing. So, I'll be starting that this week. That will be a comprehensive look at the economy. So, I'll start at the national level, I'll ratchet it down to the region, down to Idaho, down to Meridian. And I always do a three-year revenue projection. I'm trying to run a tight budget schedule this year, so I'm trying to get that done quickly. Very cool, a lot of, you look at demographics in the area, you look at, Idaho does a great report on what it looks like as far as commercial, residential development. Somebody in community development has gotten interested in this and is kind of, kind of dig into. So, again, cool project. New project, another, okay, I hate to overuse cool, but this is going to be cool. This is Todd's next project. We're going to develop some budget software, the same way we did the contract management software. So, it's not quite also by hand. Be for the entire city, every fund, every department. Going to start this summer. So, phase one is the capital improvement plan. Hopefully, next year at this time, Todd will be back giving you an update. Again, it'll involve multiple departments and the great resources of Nick and Mike. You have to buy J.C. Treats. Then, another new project that Todd's actually started, we have the CIP plan. And now, we have this CFP plan. So, what he's doing is he's created a database that we're putting, we're going to put everything into. So, the capital improvement plan's just capital and related personnel. This is going to be all personnel, all capital, all operating. So, we can have, look at this whole city and start plugging numbers in and doing projections. Like, if we do this, this happens. So, we talked about statement number one. Statement number two is, we talked about accountability. Statement number two is measuring what we did. So, we've gone full circle and kind of tie into what Tom's going to talk to you about, this strategic plan. There actually is a concept statement called C, the Service Efforts and Accomplishments, which is mainly saying, what did we do with the money he gave us? So, Gatsby says, financial statements measure financial performance about fiscal and operational accountability. But, they do not provide all the information necessary to the degree to which the government was successful in helping maintain or improve the well-being of its citizens. So, a concept statement, something funny happens with concept statements. Sometimes, frequently, they become standards, which means you'll do it. It's part of your audit financial statements. So, very good chance that this concept statement will become a standard and we will have to include this report with our audit report. So, basically, a C report is a performance measurement report. It's, what was the goal of the program? What did the program do? You know, a discussion back of results and challenges. Obviously, we can set a lot of goals and challenges or unexpected things, like lack of funding meaning you can't achieve them. But it kind of has a standard format, I won't spend any more time on it because there are hundreds of formats. So, I took an example, this is actually, um, I don't know, I can't remember the city. Austin, Austin, that's right. So, it's their cultural, cultural arts and entertainment, they have a budget of $44 million. Hillary is loving this, and 56 full-time accountants. So, they just, if you just, you can go to any city and look at their website. They do a very simple, this is the purpose of the program, this is the history, and then I stopped typing. And they had some very simple targets and whether they met them or not. So, just to give you an idea of where we hope to move and hope to be back here next year talking about that we actually did some of it and not just we want to do some of it. So, that's kind of the end of my part of the presentation. I have some budget projects for you all. So, we talked a little bit two weeks ago about fund balance transfers, maybe having some policies around those or standardization. So, it would be good if I got feedback on what your goals might be and what your desired results might be and that can help me kind of guide how to get there. I just, an example would be economic development projects. So, month, they aren't, you can't always plan for them, you want to be agile and take advantage of them. So, how would we get there? How could we kind of create a cushion to do that? How much would we need? How much would we become for spending? Maybe you want to say, we don't want to budget more than X percent of each year's revenue on personnel or personnel and operating, and I can research that for you. But if there's things like that that you think of, let me know and again, I'll do some research on that too. Is where do you want to get to? And then, I know how I can help you get there. So, on this internal audit performance policy evaluation person, I think you should do it. I think you should follow through with it. This function can do probably more things than one person can do. But policy option, analysis, routine, internal audit, solution research. Kind of where I was going at the end of the meeting last time, I think if you do it, it has to be right the first time. Because this is a very unique function, there's going to be only one person doing it. You need somebody who's really experienced, they have to be independent, they have to be skilled, they have to report to six or seven people. They have to also have the trust, not only of you, the mayor, but in employees. So, it's really important that I, this person be very experienced, I think. I was thinking you could invite voices auditor, someone from the State Office of Performance Evaluations to help you write a job description, send an interview with you. Not that I'm telling you what to do, but those are just, just some of my ideas of how this could work. And finally, keep the state legislature informed about your challenge and responsibilities at the local level. You are basically working for free. You, I must, if I get up there and do facts and figures, I'm just a suit, just telling the facts and figures. If, if it comes from you, it's going to mean something. And if we don't do this, we're going to keep losing more and more of our revenue because they don't want to increase their taxes and there are some big issues at the state level. You all know it, transportation, education, health and welfare. If, they're going to take, it's just an erosion. It's every year, it's a little piece, a little piece, a little piece. So, I think it's really important that you have relationships and you share your challenges because that's where it all happens, is at this level. That's what makes it look like it looks like. So, I think that is just a key, a key thing for the upcoming year. Any information you want, again, we'd be glad to get, to get for you or dig up or you probably have it. So, that concludes the presentation, the dilemmas.
Counsel, any questions?
Just a very, very good report.
Mr. Kevin.
Is now, sorry, Dean. Um, Stacy, question for you. How, what percentage of our utility billing payments come in over the counter or over the phone? Is it half, a third? I need to put you on the spot.
It's good for her. You need to wait until you're up there.
On a daily basis, I would say probably only about a third of our payments come in in person, over the counter. The bulk of our payments are electronically. They hit various lock boxes, whether it be a hard copy check mailed into a lock box or people's bill, bank bill pays run in. But I would say the bulk of the payments actually come to us electronically these days. We'll have, I want to say, based on the slide, I want to say it's about 2,000 payments come across the desk, whether it be a credit card or a check in the lobby compared to 10,000 payments that come in.
Great, thanks, appreciate it.
Any other questions from counsel?
Nice report, Stacy.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen. And thank you to the finance team and all of the various departments or efforts that go on. We appreciate all you do. Okay, item 7B is under our Arts Commission update, so we'll turn this to Robert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the counsel. We're back before you, based upon the direction that you gave us a few weeks ago with the now aptly-ordained MAPS ordinance, the Meridian Arts, sorry, I lost my place, Meridian Art and Public Spaces ordinance. We took this back to the Arts Commission at your recommendation for their discussion. They had no comments, they said it looks great. So, we're back before you to report that they've reviewed it and here to seek further direction on how you'd like us to proceed, either to put this on a future agenda for consideration or to ask any questions with Ms. Kane, who was here, that actually wrote the proposed ordinance. So, that would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions? Mr. Borton.
Question for you, Robert, maybe Emily, but the language in the draft ordinance, the word shall, the counsel shall, I read it wrong, as though-
You read it correct.
Shall allocate funds each year for this particular purpose. Is there any issue with giving yourselves by ordinance to fund? Oh, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Madam Mayor. Counsel member Borton.
Got it, everybody.
So, the short answer is no, there's no problem with that. There's, there are other mechanisms in the code where you state what you're going to do from year to year with the city's money. And the, if there comes a year when the city council does not wish to allocate funds for the MAPS program, the ordinance could be repealed, it's as simple as that. Shall does establish a definitive policy to say that this is the commitment that city council is going to make from year to year.
Madam Mayor, is the source of, you might have discussed this in the meeting, is the source of funds limited to general fund?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, yes, it is.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
On top of Joe's question there, Emily, why couldn't it be May and then we don't have to worry about peeling an ordinance or something? City Council, May, on an annual basis, with a shall. There might be some years that we, fortunately, we never have, but there might be some years when we can fund, but why can't May just go in there and then we don't have to worry about repealing an ordinance?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bird, that's certainly an option. I think this is a, again, a definitive statement of policy, it's a commitment and it's analogous to other percent for art programs where cities declare that art is an important part of their community and they want to do that every year. So, it really, though you're not completely trapped, it does set a policy saying that you're going to make this commitment every year.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
The reason for my question is just whether it's appropriate, the perspective. I'm committed to the tone of commitment of the word shall, I don't have a problem with that as long as it's permissible and we have the ability to undo it in future time.
Right. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think you did a, a great job writing it up and so my recommendation is you to put it on a future agenda.
Okay. Will do.
Thank you.
Did you hear that? Make sure counsel, when you talk, to swallow the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item seven C is under our community development, um, department. And I will recognize many of our steering committee members here that I'm sure Bruce will introduce, as if they need introduction.
Uh, Mayor, council members, yeah. Uh, this afternoon, we have several members of our steering committee, Calvin Barrett, Rob McCarville, Clint Shiflett. I believe Ashley is still here as well, she has to leave here in a few minutes. Steering committee, um, but we're really, we are really appreciative of the chambers, um, hosting of the steering committee and of the structure that's brought, and the energy that's been channeled through the steering committee for this project. So really, really glad those folks are here this afternoon. Um, maybe if I could give a, just a quick update to queue up the discussion of the Performing Arts Center. Um, we do remain on schedule to issue the RFP in June, as we, uh, first reported to you, um, uh, in March. There's been a lot of activity. Um, the Performing Arts Subcommittee has been very active. Uh, what they've been doing is they've prepared a letter of interest. It's actually gone out and I've heard some of the performing arts groups have responded to it. Um, the, the letter of interest has gone out under the auspices of the Meridian Arts, Arts Foundation. I think it was felt that it was better for a letter like that to come from, uh, a group like the Arts Foundation rather than say from the, from the city of Meridian, that that would simply be, uh, more appropriate. But really briefly, the LOI asks, are, are you interested in performing at a venue in Meridian? Um, what do you need in a venue? What do you want? What's your wish list? Um, the expected number of performances and ticket sales that the group could expect to have, uh, what funding they bring to the table. Um, and as we talked about with our overall schedule, those letters of interest, the intent is to take those, compile them, and put together a picture of the performing arts venue that would be ideal for the greatest number of performing arts groups. That information can then be included in the request for proposals as information for the, for the proposals, for the development proposals. The other thing we've been doing is, uh, besides looking at a lot of RFPs from around the country, is we've had informal discussions with developers. Uh, several meetings in which we've laid out, uh, what we were looking for and said, look, please throw cold water on this. Um, you know, if this is, you think is going to be a positive effort that will get attention for the development community, uh, we need to hear that, but we also need to hear any criticism as well. What we've heard is, from the developers, is, 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 and I'm, I'm really sort of, um, summarizing this in a very loose way. They've said, sure, city, Meridian community, lay out what you want. Lay out your concept, lay out the sites. You know, as, as you know, we have a, a couple of, of conceptual layouts on specific sites. State that you desire and want to partner with a development team to, um, to get a hotel conference center and a performing arts center. But they said, don't limit, um, the responders to proposing about just that, the, the, that, that concept or those uses. Take your blinders off and encourage developers to also look at additional uses and possibly additional sites in the downtown area. Um, in particular, one developer commented that they, uh, fairly recently, CCDC in Boise, uh, issued a request for proposals, you might have read about it in the Statesman, for the water cooler site. And one of the things that, uh, this particular developer appreciated about that RFP was that they were, it, it wasn't closed. It wasn't a closed, very specific thing. It's, it's like, okay, here's the site, but what would you propose for the site and perhaps even for the area around the site, should you want to throw additional uses and properties into it? They thought that that was a good approach. Um, and the other thing, and so that's, that's some of the feedback we've had from developers. It, it is encouraging, it's by no means definitive. Um, some of the other things we've talked about is that, uh, the developers, I think, pretty much all said, yes, we would need public participation to help mitigate our risks in a project like this. So they, they would expect to see something brought to the table by the community, by the public, uh, to help mitigate the risks. So there are various ways, various ways of, of doing that, um, that I think we'll, we'll be exploring. We're also looking at some other funding strategies besides any TIF money that might be available or, uh, as we've discussed, an auditorium district for Meridian. Uh, one that is available to us under state law is the Community Infrastructure District, CID. Um, it's not a new tool, it's been around for several years. Uh, there are three of them in the state, Harris Ranch in Boise has one, Averwar just got one. And basically what it does is it funds infrastructure, um, by taking the risk, um, and putting it onto those who benefit from the infrastructure equipment, the actual property owners that, that benefit from the infrastructure. So we'll be looking at that as well. Um, scratch me and you'll see that, that my, my knowledge is not very deep on this. Um, if, if counsel is interested, we could certainly queue up a presentation from, um, a law firm and a consulting firm that have, have done these, um, around the state and elsewhere. Some more on that, perhaps. I'm given that, I, I believe the request is for a discussion of the performing arts component and whether or not it should be included in the request for proposals. Um, and I'd just be happy to, to, to have that discussion with you. And if steering committee members want to be involved with that, certainly welcome that as well. Uh, the idea that, uh, we're moving ahead with is that the, we could go all the way from, say, uh, in the RFP to developers, here, here's a performing arts center, uh, idea, here's the, how, how far the, the public has gotten with it, um, be aware of it. All the way to developer, we're going to challenge you to deliver on a performing arts center. So there's a spectrum, a range there that we could challenge developers on, all the way from saying awareness to, we are going to require you to show us how you can deliver a performing arts center, given the information that, that we've, uh, that we've included. And I should also mention that the developers we've spoken to feel that the performing arts center would be key to the success of a hotel conference center, that their, that their relationship there is very strong. So even if those particular developers were, wouldn't be interested, that we spoke to, wouldn't be interested in developing a performing arts center, they realize the importance of that to the success, especially the hotel.
I, I think, um, essentially, when you start out taking an idea that comes out in a report and you start to, um, drill down and, um, have the conversations, oftentimes it, it takes side roads you never envisioned. Uh, Clint is here, he serves on the funding subcommittee and, um, brought up the conversation of the CID and, and other funding tools that, that might be brought into this process. Uh, Rob did a, a wise handoff to Calvin and, um, Calvin is now, uh, chairing the various subcommittees and, um, trying to herd all the cats in, in this, uh, project. And Ashley has been involved on the public relations. As this starts to progress, we, uh, realize that a number of questions evolve. And, um, it's important to get out in front of those, looking at what some of those frequently asked questions would be and bringing, um, fact to help keep it grounded to the, the project that, um, certainly this counsel had heard about and to hopefully help ground truth, uh, the, where we're at and dispel any, um, any rumors or, um, things that, some of the questions, even identify some of the questions that are coming up and being asked. So anyway, we appreciate all the efforts that are, that are underway and, and, um, would open this up to counsel's questions or, or comments.
And Mayor, if I, if I could add one thing that I think is a good way of approaching their request for proposals. Um, Calvin said a couple of times that the request for proposals, in his view, is a proof of concept. That is, it's answering questions that we don't currently have. So approaching the discussion from that way might, might, might be useful, that we're trying to find out what we don't know and learn things along the way and come up with a concept that works best for us.
Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor. Um, the reason that, that led to the question last week to come and have this discussion this week was just the point that Bruce was making, concerning kind of which end of the spectrum the city wants to go down. And it was my understanding, um, receiving the Pegasus report and some of the questions that were asked of, of us, for the commitment we wanted to make concerning the performing arts center, that that was part of a specific deliverable within the RFP. Then as you've gathered data, I got a sense and some of the Arts Foundation got a sense that maybe that focus has been diluted a little bit, focused more on the hotel convention center idea that may or may not incorporate a performing arts center, which seemed to be a little different tact. So that's what brought us, at least here today, to try and get some clarity of, from my perspective, I thought it was urgent and adamant and crystal clear that performing arts center, not necessarily site specific, performing arts center was a specific component and requested deliverable within the RFP. So when you gave your spectrum reference, it was on the far end of the certain challenge to the developer.
Mayor and Councilmember Borton, um, I think my only hesitation on, uh, including a performing arts district as a requirement of the RFP would be, if the performing arts center could be privately funded and have legs of its own, we wouldn't want to slow it down. Other than that, I'm certainly fine with including that as a requirement. Um, it simply goes into our review, how well the developer has responded to that component, along, along with the other components that we're asking.
Madam Mayor, and by requirement, I mean, it's required to be within the request that goes out. I think it was discussed that there would be options within the RFP, you could compose on a hotel and/or conference center, or perhaps the performing arts center independent, perhaps you could do all three. I think that's what I'd heard you say is the, kind of the open door opportunity for the developer. What I was concerned about that, through any of its development, that the performing arts center piece was omitted.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, certainly not, certainly not omitted. I think that, uh, that they, talking about the option of the performing arts center really came from listening to folks in the community that felt that, well, would developers really be interested in doing that? Would that be something that, um, really is, we, we, we know that it'd be synergistic with the other components, uh, the other pieces of what we want to accomplish, but is that, is that the best way to success? And I, I guess I was just simply asking that question of folks in the community, is that the best way to go or should we require it? Certainly what I'm hearing from you is that it, we should continue to keep our eye on the big three projects, a hotel conference center and the performing arts center as requirements for the RFP.
Did you understand that answer?
I did.
I'm still working on it.
I think I did. And then, and what's great about this presentation, and I'm, and I'm so glad folks from the steering committee are here, is if we're going to go down this track, it's really important that it's a single, consistent message from the city and, and in all fairness to yourself and work to develop it, that, that if there's a different way to go, you need to make sure we're figuring out our direction to you and to what the steering committees do. But what, where we're headed and where we have made commitments to go is, is pretty clear.
Mayor and Councilmember Borton, in between discussions that we have here with, with the group, you know, we try to listen to the community and try to remain nimble. So hopefully they weren't really expensive.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
No counsel, yes.
I don't want to put Calvin on the spot.
Yes, you do.
It seems, it seems like you've been put in, uh, pilot's chair on this thing and I just want to get a sense from him, what he envisions that's going to entail.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton.
Is this better?
Better.
All right. Um, from the, from the chambers' perspective and through guidance from counsel, um, I think what the steering committee is trying to do is vet this process out and deliver an RFP that addresses the original intent from counsel, which was to include all three projects. Uh, some of the frequently asked questions or concerns that have been raised is, well, when you throw in the performing arts centerpiece, is who is going to own it? And then subsequently, who is going to operate it? Um, there is some communications from the arts side that I've just heard in passing that, you know, they, they feel that the city shouldn't be owning that portion of this project. So that's where the discussion is, has led in terms of, do you need to separate those two projects? Um, the steering committee actually does need some guidance in terms of how you want them to proceed. Developers are saying, well, they don't really know how the performing arts center is going to make them any money. They can make money on developing a hotel, they can make money on developing a potential convention center, but how does the developer make money on the performing arts piece of it? So that's where the discussions have, have, have led us to this point is, do we need to separate or do you want to include them? The steering committee is willing to do and follow any of the direction that is provided. These are just some of the questions that have, have been, uh, have come up and we would seek your guidance.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I, I think they have to be separated. I, I don't see developers wanting to do a performing arts center as part of their project. Uh, performing arts centers, they believe it's a different business to run than what the developers are for. I can't think of any development that's tied a performing arts center to, to it. I mean, the convention center you can with the hotel and stuff, but not the performing arts. So, um, all I want to see and I think all, all of it works together. I, I, I don't think we need to tie the developer into the performing arts, letting, having the convention and the hotel or motel.
I, I think probably an important step in, in what Mr. Borton was, was pointing out is, um, through this vetting process and, and through the, the letter that the Arts Foundation put out, it, it helps to identify partners, um, in the performing arts and their needs that would be essential in a performing arts venue. Um, that can be an option in putting out an RFQ to, um, for the responding, um, entity to either choose to include or not. But at least it, it helps define. to include or not, but at least it helps define some of those projects that were identified and are in the plan as components necessary in the potential redevelopment of the downtown. And it gives the different art venues or interests an idea of what is needed and who is interested and what gap, it almost expands that gap that our consultant identified that is needed and will help us start bringing that all together and into a package. And I think that's maybe one of the things that Mr. Borton was kind of addressing is that is going to be important piece, whether it's included in the RFP or a developer decides to respond to that piece. They know what the essential components of that piece is going to look like and perhaps we might have a responding interest that does have expertise or an eye, or interest in that because they can see that it's going to be bringing potential philanthropic interest to it and also perhaps additional funding to address a joint issue and that's going to be the parking piece. So I don't know, I would agree with Mr. Borton, you don't want to totally close the door on that, but continue on the RFP as you have several parts to this. It could be all inclusive or you can separate one out and that's the beauty of it. The other piece, and I know this will be addressed in the frequently asked questions, is we're looking at the public parcels to most of this and in terms of, and not private property parcels, that hasn't been identified as what we're putting out there. I do think one question is, is the corner out in front as well?
And Madam Mayor, we certainly have that discussion about the east parking lot. The idea being that the more we can bring to the table at the outset, perhaps the more effective this is. So just an idea that's been discussed since the last time we spoke about this discussion item is the idea of including our parking lot out here in front of City Hall with the idea that, say to a developer potentially, this could be part of a multi-use center, part of the things we're looking for. With the stipulation that, I'm sorry, there'd be more than one stipulation, but certainly with, at least with a stipulation that the number of parking spaces available to the public be recreated in some fashion, that they, you know, so perhaps it could be a parking facility there with additional parking spaces that could help the entire area, perhaps there would be a revenue stream for a developer, for the city, but that might be part of the puzzle as well. I believe that's what you're referring to.
And I think that's what the council always had envisioned, a higher and better use.
Mayor, a second ago, I don't want to lose that trail of that discussion, but a second ago as you were talking, I was remembering a discussion I had with a chairman of the board of a performing arts group, and this individual is in touch with, you know, potential philanthropists. And the discussion went along the lines of, well, this individual, would this philanthropist or any other philanthropist put their money into something and pledge money unless there's a project? So perhaps going back to Councilmember Borton's emphasis on including this, perhaps the strength of requiring performing arts to be addressed by the developer is that we could then have a real project that could then be benefited by philanthropic money. And someone has to move off square one, I think. And perhaps that's the way of moving off square one with the performing arts centers, by challenging the developer to come up with a concept that then donors could contribute to. That's just another thought.
Thank you. We've made it even milder.
Madam Mayor, I would agree with what Bruce just said and that's kind of the concept that I was thinking about. It's always been, yeah, it's not going to be a developer financed, let's say, but it is going to be a developer-driven thing based on what they come up with with the convention and hotel complex. You said in your comments that it's a valuable component if it's there for that complex to succeed. So again, it's an option that we throw out there and say, how does this work with yours? How can you work this with yours, knowing that the potential for that is going to be a philanthropic process? Here's what the community said in terms of needs. Here are some folks that are backing those kinds of things. Put it in or put it out, but at least have it in the RFP that if it's something you think you can build a proposal around, throw in that Performing Arts Center in a way that complements your convention hotel complex. And the city throws in, you know, we're, as the mayor said, we're in it in terms of land and anything else we can do to make it move forward. To me, that's the separation we need is that we understand it's not something that we're expecting you to go out and do, you know, but we're expecting you to at least consider that proposal, you know, submit to the city of that component being and how best does that work with you. So it is potentially in a project, so you can say, well, this is how it would work. Would you be willing to fund it?
It's kind of like identifying the potential inhabitants as well. So it's whether in the event center, it's a potential museum or a library or the chamber or whatever it is, it's helping to identify different components to the project that would help make it pencil out more. Any other comments from council? Mr. Cavanagh?
My only comment is that I don't see what we lose by keeping all of them together and I think ultimately we gain a whole lot more by keeping the group, so I think you've heard probably bottom clear from the majority of us that that's the direction that you head.
And give the RFP options to piece some parcel away. Anything further from council or anything you need?
Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to just brief the council on the progress that's being made. And as Bruce mentioned, you know, we really are working on a proof of concept and we don't know what we don't know yet. And we may find a developer that's willing to come in and do the whole thing and then we've got to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So there's a lot of unanswered questions in this process. There's a lot of talented people that are volunteering their time to work on this steering committee. The council has definitely given their input. I would agree, I would make it a comprehensive RFP at this point. You could always separate it later, but if you don't include it, you don't know what the response is. Nobody knows what the Performing Arts Center looks like. We don't have a picture, we don't have any drawings, you know, right now we're just trying to, as I mentioned before, we're kind of fishing. We've got a great idea, we've spent a little bit of money in terms of our consultant to tell us what we need to have a vitalized downtown area and the steering committee is working toward that direction. And you've got some great partners on that committee, the city is involved, Meridian Veltman Corporation as well as the Chamber and then several other interested parties. The Meridian Arts Foundation is involved and the idea here is to try to gather some momentum, get a little bit more information and then ultimately see if we can actually pull it off. So thank you for the opportunity.
And I would just add a lot of enthusiasm, so, and interest. It's exciting. Anything further?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, to that point, I, you know, we can't lose sight of the fact that there really is interest and demand from the groups that you've talked to and the reason your steering committee is populated by the kind of heavy hitters that are on it is because your group, through the chamber, is aware of that true real interest and Bruce has heard it and we've heard it, we've seen in the audience some pretty powerful people from our arts community in the valley. That's the reason why we as a city are giving you that clear direction to drive forward the way you are. One of the next items that we're all going to talk about is the strategic plan process for the city. I think it's the fifth component of the strategic plan makes some specific reference to commitment to the arts as part of a vibrant community. So the timing of this is great and I really appreciate the steering committee's efforts and the efforts Bruce to keep driving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the direction.
Counsel, I'm going to call a five-minute break and we'll reconvene at seven after five. Thank you. We'll start again and turn this over to Robert for item 7D.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. What you have in front of you today is our annual State of the City budget amendment. This budget amendment is to provide additional $6,930 in spending authority. As you are aware, we fundraised the monies from sponsorships for the State of the City. The bills for the State of the City have been paid. This is to allocate the additional funds above what was brought in for the cost of the State of the City to put towards some projects which have, were committed to by the mayor as part of the State of the City, which includes the Meridian Symphony being part of Gene Kleiner Day, that's an annual commitment for that. It also has some items which we've talked to you about in the mayor's strategic office focused these funds by allocating them to welcome video, instead of meridian videos, we're going to be able to get a jump on that project to get it going this year rather than waiting about a year from now until the weather gets going so we can have these ready by the State of the City in 2016. So with that, I'd So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the budget amendment, but all these funds have been collected, and happy to stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Aye, ma'am.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Roundtree.
Any more comments or discussion I knew that we approve item 7D and not to exceed $6,930?
Beggar.
I have a motion as second to approve items 7D. Madam Clerk, who you call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree?
Aye.
Councilmember Zaramba?
Aye.
And Councilmember Borton is temporarily absent.
I'm sure it wasn't me. You need to stay under there. Okay, so, all ayes, motion carried, and we're at 7E under the city's strategic plan. Counsel, it's my honor to be in, I don't have to push anything on this little thing. Where do I point it? Okay. Had Tom. It's certainly my privilege and honor to be in front of you to introduce this next item. And first, I'll ask that you all got your plan last week, and just want to make sure that you all received it. Okay. We wanted to get it out well in advance, so you had an opportunity to review it and absorb it. Certainly, I don't have to tell many of you that are sitting up there that the city is, has seen some rapid growth, and that we tripled between 1990 and 2000, and we doubled between 2000 and 2008. Several years ago, at a department retreat, a director retreat, it was really identified that the need for a comprehensive citywide strategic plan. Certainly, we've been working the plan that was created through the focus areas that was adopted by councils previous to several of you sitting up there, and some of our individual department plans that really focused on those different areas that were identified. Tonight, I am pleased to show you the, a plan that will support, identify, and prioritize our organizational efforts. And this is a plan that's over a five-year period, and this plan will align outcomes with community priorities and through our goals and objectives. So, as I had mentioned, we have seen a number of growth, and with that, we've added responsibilities, service expectations, as well as staffing requirements, and new regulatory requirements as well. Today, we thrive, and certainly, I will, would like to not patronize all of you, but thank all of you for the role that you have played in where we're at today as a community. Certainly, I would be remiss if I also didn't thank our senior management team and our employees and our community partners in getting us there as well. We are a full-service community, and we're serving over 90,000 residents, and I know we've seen a number of different population numbers, but needless to say, those numbers will continue to expand, and we know we need to focus our efforts to make sure that we continue that, those expectations from our citizens of levels of services, and although we've done good, we know we can always do better. So, the importance of strategic planning, we know that we need to guide our future, we need to guide our growth, we need to be visionary, deliberate, and disciplined in our approach to this. Certainly, this talks about this importance of strategic planning. It is a roadmap to our success. I equate it to something that comes up often in our in-play surveys. And the feedback we get in these in-place surveys, I always relate to a car trip with my kids. It's where are we going? Are we there yet? And are we going to enjoy the trip once we arrive? And so, I think that that encapsulates that road to success is we need to share with our employees where we're going, where we are in the process, so they know when we will be there, and when we arrive, we can celebrate those successes. Certainly, it defines specific results. It establishes a clear vision. It sets appropriate strategic objectives, and it also aligns our resources with the decisions that we need to make to achieve our strategic objectives. And these last two are really important in the communication piece. It communicates, again, those, that direction, and that we're ensuring our citizens that we are guiding growth where it was planned. And in our citizen survey, number one of those concerns was growth. And it wasn't necessarily, in our opinion, the rate of growth, it's that we're planning for it, that we're identifying resources, and that it's being guided where it is planned for. And it's a communication tool that shows what our city's priorities and the direction is. So, this is our strategic planning team, which is no surprise to you. This is the team that together came to you to share our initial results. It certainly was facilitated by Phil Eastman, and I do want to specifically acknowledge Tom Berry, Mark Neymeyer, Robert Simison, and Bruce Chatterton, who, as in any exercise, and all of you have been involved in a lot of boards and other activities, you know that there's always someone that helps guide and facilitate, and those four were part of that team that really help us keep us on track. And so, my thanks to each of them. So, this is our process. Now, this looks like a public works diagram, and I think it probably is. Now, I just wanted to, this is a great graphic that shows you there is a lot of front-end work to aligning this to where we were last fall when we talked about the focus areas, to where we were when we talked about the mission, vision, and restated our values. But this kind of aligns what we did in getting, getting there through this process. So, we acquire, first, we acquired training in dimensional strategy, and that really set a framework. We hired leadership advisor that helped facilitate this process. Then, we conducted an organization-wide strengths assessment, which really measured the readiness and the overall management strength of our community. It set that framework of this process. We conducted citywide environmental scan, which is essentially the SWOT analysis. We reviewed the mission, vision, and care values. We then met with you last fall, and we appreciated that opportunity to really brainstorm and see, are we in line with what you, our leaders, envision as the future growth of our community, and where we should be spending our time and our resources as we move forward over this next five-year process? We use your input to then develop strategic goals and objectives, which is in front of you today. Now, by any means, in this diagram, it shows the final draft and council review. This is not ready to implement, but what we would like to do is to have you in the next couple of weeks adopt the plan that now our departments can work with to develop specific tactical and operational plans, and through that process, we will come back to you with measurements, because we believe that you need key performance indicators to, again, know, are we there yet? And know when we have arrived. But we didn't want to take all of that if we're not on the right track, which is why we're here today. So, this is a vision statement that we brought to you last fall, and through this, it hasn't changed since we last visited with you, but this really drove the focus areas, and it took this vision statement to really deliver these areas and start developing those goals and objectives. The mission statement also is what you saw last fall, as well as the care values. And the care values are much more than just words on a sheet of paper. It's really how we treat one another and we treat our customers, but it really is the conscious that guides our vision. These are the city focus areas. Again, these are areas that you saw last fall, and I will, in a few minutes, just turn this over to Tom to take it from there. But strategic growth, they did look at these statements, and I think they just firm them up a little bit in terms of strategic growth, economic vibrancy, responsive government, safe and healthy, health and safety? Yeah, well, I think it's still safe and healthy, and arts, culture, and recreation. As Councilmember Borton pointed out, the discussion that we had prior to this really is driving some of this in terms of what we've done in collecting all of this different data. The community impacts, inputs have been significant. We've used our comprehensive plan, our economic development plan, our capital improvement plan, but we've also used the feedback that we've received from council in the strategic discussions that each department has when they stand in front of you, and through the impact we have through our liaisons. We've used the focus, the previous focus areas. We've looked at the citywide survey, both the last two, in helping to develop these different components that you'll be discussing here soon. We've used input that we received at town hall meetings, at coffee with the mayor, and certainly through our employee surveys. So, at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Tom, and he'll walk you through the document that you have in front of you.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm honored to stand with the mayor this afternoon and also to represent my colleagues, the other directors who have put quite a bit of time and effort into this plan, and we're excited to share it with you and continue the conversation. The mayor got to cover the fun stuff, so I'll get to just cover the logistics and content and boring stuff like that. But just to get you familiar with the organization around the plan, I'm going to put a couple graphics together and an example or two to highlight the relationship between the plan and its level in our organization, how it will be unrolled or unveiled throughout the organization. The work that's been done to date essentially represents most of the elements of the top of this particular pyramid. We, as the mayor mentioned, refined our vision, mission, we reaffirmed our values, and then we really rolled up our sleeves and began working on identifying goals, very broad goals, and objectives that would support those goals at the city level, all in alignment with the city focus areas that were described and discussed with you last fall. So, all of that work that says determined at the city level, that's been done, and that document is what was delivered to you last week. There is still a whole host of work that needs to be done at the department level that we've paused on at the moment, because we want to make sure before we roll up our sleeves as department directors and really jump into that work, that you as a council agree with the broad goals and the objectives that support those goals before we really begin to operationalize those. So, let me just talk with you a little bit about how this, how we see this sort of working. And I'll use this example. Let's say we have a broad goal, which is to just generally improve operational efficiency. The way this plan is structured, we might have several objectives that would support that broad goal. In this case, I've just shown two here. Maybe improving emergency response in and around, operational efficiency, or another objective would be to optimize, say, personnel operations and maintenance. There could be additional objectives, and you'll see those objectives in the plan under each of the broad goals, and each of those objectives would then be operationalized by the appropriate departments, which would have responsibility for carrying out one or more of the objectives under each of the broad goals. For example, if we were talking about emergency response, we might say we want to identify or evaluate and institute improvements to dispatching emergency responders. That would be an operational efficiency goal improvement. Clearly, if it was related to public safety, we might have the fire and the police departments take the leading role in their tactical plans to make those improvements. Alternatively, another objective to advance the operational efficiency goal, and these are just examples, of course, would be, say, maybe to conduct preventive versus preventative maintenance activities by instituting a citywide asset management program. That's a strategy that we could utilize. We're doing that in public works now, but we don't do that as a city. Well, in that case, we might have other departments which might lend assistance to or guide or have a role in helping that to move forward. So, those are just two examples of how we sort of see the operationalization of this particular plan being carried out in the future. This strategic plan has been influenced heavily by our economic development plan, the comprehensive plan, and the capital improvement plan as they already exist. We have put a lot of time and energy as a city into investing in the development of those plans, and we didn't want this new strategic plan to come along and undermine all of that work that we've done. So, in this first go-ahead or first go-around with the strategic plan, we used those documents to influence the development of this strategic plan. However, going forward, we see that after we incorporate those components into the strategic plan, that we will begin to utilize the strategic plan to influence then all of those other plans. Because by thinking more strategically, we will begin to align those supplemental plans that really should be driven by the strategies we have as a city. So, for example, our comprehensive plan, our economic development plan, all of the department plans, which are these tactical or operational plans, the capital improvement plan, as well as our budget as a city, both short and long term, should be driven by the strategies that we agree help us to achieve the vision that we've set for ourselves as a community and city. So, that's how we eventually plan to be operating with this strategic plan, is that it will be a primary lead document that allow us to, and govern our budgets, our tactical resources, our human resources, our equipment, materials, all of that sort of stuff. So, let's talk quickly about the plan. I won't go through the entire plan, but I will highlight essentially the primary goals in, under each of the city focus areas. Before I do that, you'll notice that the plan is pretty involved. We have all departments represented in their work in developing this plan and vetting it. We have five city focus areas that you helped to develop last fall. From that, we developed 20 broad goals, and out of those 20 broad goals came a subset of 72 strategic objectives. The timeframe we are generally dealing with here, although I think most of the The timeframe we are generally dealing with here, although I think most of the directors and the mayor would agree, is a little aggressive. We wanted to set the bar high, and that is a five-year time horizon. Um, we don't know if we'll be able to get all of this done in the five-year period, but we certainly want to try. Each objective supports one or more of the city focus areas. We did not deviate from the hierarchy I've just described. Uh, and the tactics and activities that I mentioned earlier, which will come from the departments when they operationalize the plan, are still to be added later as administrative and operational components of the plan. So, quickly, we'll go through each of the focus areas and the broad goals. We said that, uh, under the strategic growth, that good growth fuels a city and Meridian will provoke growth that enhances its vision and its family-focused, properly planned, financially viable, and diverse. Under this, we've set four broad goals. The first is to facilitate the development and growth of Meridian's downtown, culminating in a strong and diverse community core. Second, we want to create a growth management system to foster, foster the growth goals of the city in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Uh, third, preserve and protect land use and zoning plans to promote certainty and predictability for future development within the adopted area of city impact. And finally, develop and sustain the connections that shape and serve our community. Now, for more detail under each of these goals, you would go to the plan and you'd have each of the objectives that were identified. And under those objectives to come later are the tactics or activities that will support those objectives to move them toward the attainment of the goal. So, they don't see that detail, at least in what we're sharing today, but you have that certainly in the plan that we shared with you a week ago. Under economic vibrancy, jobs make a city vibrant. Meridian will recruit family wage jobs and promote the growth of existing organizations in employment zones that put work and life together. Three broad goals include influencing the location and retention of family wage jobs in close proximity to where people live. Second, partner with others to develop a qualified workforce that meets the needs of the targeted industries. And finally, promote a diverse and sustainable economy. Focus area three was in relation to responsive government. We recognize that the successful government of the twenty-first century is service-driven, approachable, and responsive. Meridian will embody those qualities by improving efficiency, enhancing transparency, utilizing technology, and investing in our employees. Uh, those five, or the five goals that support this general focus area include elevating the engagement of the community with their local government, establishing a comprehensive workforce development and retention program for the city, ensuring flexibility, adaptability, and resiliency of government during times of crisis and recovery, improving operational efficiency and organizational excellence, and enhancing transparency and decision-making of city government. So, all of, a lot of these goals are inward-looking and some of them are outward-looking as well. And we think that was important. Focus area three, health and safety, safe and healthy. For a community to prosper, it must be safe, secure, and healthy. Meridian will invest in activities and services that enhance public safety and community health to build a stronger community and promote the quality of life that its citizens and employees expect. Again, five broad goals. First is to establish Meridian as a premier-
Safe community.
Second is to establish Meridian as a premier healthy community. If we want to be premier, we believe that we have to be premier both in safety and in health, also in security. Promote and advance social services that strengthen the socio-economic well-being of our community. This refers to its community safety net. Establish a comprehensive health and safety program for the city of Meridian. And finally, advance sustainable and environmentally healthy practices throughout the city. Finally, our fifth focus area is, uh, in arts, culture, and recreation. We recognize also that a premier community embraces cultural diversity and promotes an abundant offering of arts, entertainment, and recreational opportunities. Meridian will invest in services, facilities, programs, and partnerships to establish itself as an active and vibrant community that fulfills the diverse cultural and recreational needs of its people. Here, we have three broad goals. The first is to spur development of quality, regionally significant facilities for recreation and entertainment in Meridian. Uh, to develop, maintain, and foster a portfolio of activities and events that serve the diverse needs of the citizens of Meridian. And finally, to foster the infusion of the arts into our community. So, those are the five focus areas with the twenty broad goals that we've talked about. The objectives, again, are in the plan that you have, but we didn't go through them specifically tonight. But what are the next steps? Well, what we would need to do is get your approval and hopefully adoption to move forward. We'd like to have this plan adopted within the next couple of weeks, as the mayor suggested. Uh, that will be the signal to the directors that we need to roll up our sleeves and begin working on the tactical or departmental level plans to support each of the objectives, which further the broad goals and therefore the attainment, hopefully, of the vision that we've shared with you earlier. This is an example of how we would do that. What you see on the screen here is a example tactical summary. Uh, here, we would describe the tactic, the goal relevance, as well as the supporting objective. We would prioritize those tactics. We would identify who the lead and who the supports were, what the start dates, the completion dates, what the general budget requirements would be, what the tactical summary is, meaning what's the purpose of this tactic. We'd also list the activities that were associated with advancing the tactic, and then we would list the performance measures in addition to make sure that we weren't barking up the wrong tree or that we weren't going after the wrong results. Uh, and then we would have status updates. And I'll share with you in just a minute what we mean by the status updates. This is one way to do it. This isn't something we've adopted just yet. This is just an example of what kind of work still needs to come in order for us to take these visionary statements, these goals and objectives, and turn them into on-the-ground improvements. We know that what, what gets measured gets improved, so we've developed a matrix here that would identify periodic, uh, reporting, uh, systematic monitoring, and updating to the strategic plan. So, biannually, we believe that the strategic plan, goals, and measurements, uh, and progress be discussed. That'll probably be at the director's meeting, uh, and the mayor would be the responsible party. Annually, there will be an execution progress report. This would tell, uh, you folks and the community, uh, and department directors, everyone, uh, what our progress is on moving or advancing the tactics, the objectives, and the goals. Um, annually, we also believe that, that we would have, through that process, a refinement of the strategic plan, know that the plan is going to need to be somewhat of a flexible document. And finally, uh, annually, there, we would review and refine the department plans to make sure that there's continued alignment between the goals and objectives and the tactical plans that have been deployed. Um, wanted to provide, uh, some thoughts from our consultant. Uh, Phil Eastman has been a great facilitator for us and, uh, he, he works with Leadership Advisors Group. Uh, he had a couple of nice things to say about the plan. I quoted him up there. Says the plan is both comprehensive and achievable, and that's a very difficult balance to strike. He's also said that the city of Meridian will reap the benefits of this discipline for years to come, and I couldn't agree more. Um, his observations about the plan, we sent it to him the same time we sent it to you. And, uh, his observations are down there in the bulleted form. I'll just highlight a couple of these. Um, I think we're all proud of the mayor for leading this effort. This is not easy work, and the mayor's investments in this path forward will be an important one and a lasting one. The effort was inclusive of all aspects of the organization, from departmental staff all the way through to, to the city council. Uh, has the right level of detail, be valuable without being overwhelmed, overwhelming. Uh, that's up for debate, right? It's pretty overwhelming and in its own form, but, uh, but I think it's important and, um, it, it reaches, I think, the right distance as well. Uh, it needs to be executed and measured to have its full effect. Uh, this plan is owned by the organization, not our consultant. Our consultant didn't put this together. He facilitated the education of the staff and reinforced the process by which we follow in order to produce this plan, but all of the goals and all of the objectives are owned by the, the strategic leadership team or the strategic planning team. And I think that's really important. Um, your adoption will also, uh, ensure that those goals and objectives are going to be embraced and owned by the city, city leadership team. Uh, and then lastly, uh, we did have some change management training, which was actually very well received, where department directors invited their key staff, the ones that are going to be helping to develop the tactical plans and also be responsible to help rolling those out into their departments into a, uh, about a half-day change management workshop, uh, which was pretty well received. We understand that, uh, we'll have to maintain the strategic plan once it gets started. But, uh, I can't emphasize enough the importance of organizational consistency in being critical in helping us to maintain momentum and in achieving the results that we're really going after here. If we change this plan wildly year after year after year, it's just like any goal you set for yourself, you won't attain any of them. So, we have to be consistent about the types of things we endeavor to achieve, but we also have to be flexible and adaptable in how we achieve them. So, we understand that it's going to have to be a dynamic document within certain parameters and one that's subject to change. Uh, staff will have opportunities through the measurement, monitoring program, and the adaptive management that we talked about a little bit earlier, uh, to reflect on progress and to make modifications to ensure that we stay on track as an organization. So, adaptive management will help us to improve organizational effectiveness and attain the performance targets if we're able to do this on a periodic basis. That's all I have for you at this point in time. I know the mayor and I are anxious to, um, as well as the directors, to get working on this, so I guess I'll leave you with this parting thought. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, we don't expect any sort of action on this, uh, today or even within the next week or two, but we would like to get the council's blessing ultimately in adoption. Uh, let's go through revisions if we need to, let's talk about philosophy, let's talk about whether we fit the mark. Um, but at the end of the day, at some point, we would like to get this approved and adopted by the city council so that we know as department directors that what we're working on is in alignment with what you expect us to work on and that it advances us truly in the direction that you and the community want and desire us to, uh, to move toward. So, with that, I'll stop and, uh, entertain any questions. I'm sure the mayor would be willing to as well.
Thank you, Tom. Hey, council, questions? Mr. Zerema.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Uh, so far, this is excellent work. I'm glad that it's going on. I can see there's a great deal of effort and, and thinking that has gone into it. Um, I think I recognize some elephant, uh, elements of, uh, continuous quality improvement in here. I think that's been-
Here, is your mic on?
It is on.
Okay.
Maybe I'm not close enough to it. Uh, uh, but as I say, I see elements of continuous quality improvement, which I all think, also think is excellent. Uh, just a thought, the example tactical summary, which you had a slide on and which in the pamphlet you gave us is on page ten of fifteen. Um, I like that you've identified, uh, start dates and completion dates and status updates. I wonder if it might be useful to specifically identify what are the key deliverables, uh, by name? Whatever those deliverables are going to be. And maybe, uh, also provide a visual chart of waymarks, uh, so that you don't just have the start date and the end date, but some key, uh, key waymarks in the way, which will lead to the status updates, uh, of whether those are being attained in an orderly, orderly manner or more or less attention needs to be given to a specific area and, and then, as I say, the key deliverables, but I think this is excellent.
Thank you, Councilman Zerema. Very good comments. Uh, I think the waymark portion should be done in a Gantt chart, for example, a few milestones and this type of thing, but we could talk about this as a director's team. I like Gantt charts. Maybe my other colleagues don't, so will be some give and take, but I, I definitely think that you brought some very good points up.
We'll let him do all the charts.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Maybe to, to Councilman Zerema's faux pas there, this, this was a big elephant, and I have, I have to be honest, uh, being through many strategic plans, I was not super excited about kind of going through this because inevitably there's multiple questions that are left at the end, and I, I only have two, so I really commend you on this. Uh, things that I, um, didn't expect to see, I saw, and, um, to the mayor's point about it being a roadmap, I think it does a good job of showing us where we're going and where we've been. Couple of questions that you can maybe answer for me. I love the tactile plan development. I think it does an exceptional job of kind of taking that conceptual piece and really making it actual. My question is, how, how are you going to rate or grade how effective those activities were performed? Is it, is it binary, we did it, so we get credit versus things that have been done extremely well to really move, um, the plan? Um, my second question is related to the update, the feedback, and I'm just curious the thought process on an annual update to council as opposed to more frequent, uh, why the biannual updates, um, to, to mayor and to the other directors as opposed to this being more frequent? And good or bad, I just was curious as to, to why those specific times were chosen.
Thank you, Councilman Kavner. Mayor, would you like me to address those? Or did you have-
Sure.
Okay, great. Um, so, an excellent, both excellent questions. As it relates to the update, uh, some of us who have some experience in operating under strategic plans, that will be the fire chief and myself, particularly here at the city, uh, and others who have exposure or have worked with strategic plans, uh, I think would all recognize that essentially, when you work on strategic objectives and the, and the type of work that's involved in those, typically, there is a certain amount of time that needs to be given to advance those initiatives. And by, uh, frequently or too frequently reporting on those, there just isn't really enough movement for the report to be meaningful. Uh, so, we've suggested that essentially we'd be kind of keeping a six-month mark on, hey, are things happening? Is it getting done? Uh, what are the roadblocks? What are those types of things? And that would be more of an administrative internal discussion with, um, the key focus on continuing to advance and keep on task those milestones. And then annually is sort of the, hey, how do we do? That's the performance evaluation. Did, did we get as far as we thought we were going to get? Did we go farther? Uh, what needs to happen and, uh, and what needs to change? So, annually seems like a good mark. Um, it falls in line also with the way that we evaluate our employees and the way that we look at other sorts of programs, plans, projects, our budget, those types of things. So, annually seemed to feel like a good fit in timeframe, but, um, you know, I don't know that that's, uh, a showstopper. If the council wants something more frequently or less frequently, I think that's something we could discuss and, and, uh, have that conversation, but that's generally the reason. Uh, to your second, uh, which was your first question, the tactical summary, um, rating or grading the impact of the tactics is going to be very difficult. Um, the first thing before we even get there is prioritizing them, right? Because we're going to realize that there's a lot of work that needs to be done by each of the departments, and some of the work will require assistance from our support staff, for example. So, uh, let's say to advance an objective or even a, a broader goal, uh, we have multiple departments wanting to do certain things in their departments that require a whole lot of assistance from IT or from legal or HR, some of those support functions, we're going to have to wrestle with. What is the prioritization of those particular activities or tactics, uh, first? And some of that prioritization, I'm guessing, will include an analysis which talks about the impact, the outcome, or the output. We use those terms in performance measurement, monitoring. Um, if you have something that's just an output metric, for example, number of phone calls per day, is that as important as the impact of each of those phone calls, uh, or the outcome? So, we intend to, uh, have conversations about how to prioritize that, but that has, those conversations haven't really happened yet. Uh, so, I'm not certain that I can give you a satisfactory answer, but I will tell you that we recognize it's going to be a challenge, uh, and it's going to start, that challenge starts right in the prioritization of, of the actual tactics and activities that we
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
How, how I reacted to the term- how I reacted to the term tactical plan. It, it just-
Come on. How I was.
I am. Uh, I just, I just envisioned people crawling around in the weeds, so that's just how it hit me when I, when I, when I read it. Sorry. But, you know, the plan is, is, is concise. Uh, I do believe what the consultant said, that it's certainly doable. I'm going to have a few picky comments as I get through and think about it, but, uh, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's a grand effort and hopefully we can get it in- But, uh, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's a grand effort and hopefully, we can get it in place. The, the idea of looking at twenty thirty-five is probably a bit ambitious for any elected body in, in city staff because you're gonna, you're gonna be lucky if you get two years out of it without having people screaming and yelling. But, uh, that's okay. You gotta do it. I wish we could do it at other levels of government so at least we weren't just looking at one year at a time.
Thank you, Councilman Rafferty.
Well, we look forward to getting that feedback and, um, yes, I, I think you do need to... We want, we want this council to own it. Um, if you own it, we have the team that will execute on it. And we can bring back those measurements and, and to, to ensure that that plan is being worked and that we're meeting those objectives that have been laid out. Certainly, as, as I mentioned earlier, these will, these will then be used specifically in the budgeting process as Tom laid out. You know, as you turn the strategic plan upright and it starts to feed in those various other efforts that we do. So, we look for your direction and we want you to be nitpicky because before we spend that time in detail to flesh it out and make it something that we can execute on, um, we, we need that full buy-in and we, we need you to, to look at it with a critical eye. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a comment, and I don't like to jump into the minutia, but I do like "safe and healthy" better than "health and safety."
I do too.
And secure.
Safe, healthy, and secure.
Madam Mayor.
That's in your context.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Miss Myler.
The only reason maybe that he changed that was that those two words were also used in the opening sentence of that and so to not be redundant possibly.
It, I, I think what Steve's point is, is, um, grammatically, it's, it's in, in better form this way, but to me, it takes the emphasis off "safe" first. And that's always been a priority of this council and the city. And that's why I like the "safe and healthy" and "secure."
And I agree with that as well. Um, I was just offering a, a possibility of why it was changed. It's for the sound of the wording.
And I don't wanna pin that all on Mr. Sidaway. He, we had a good debate.
He's not here.
I'm gonna tell him. He threw him under the bus.
No, no, he'll, he'll appreciate that. But, uh, so, if I've taken, if I take your direction correctly, then we, we will retitle that "safe, comma, secure, and healthy." Is that, is that what you like?
It's safe, healthy, and secure.
Like I said, I don't wanna get into the minutia. Make the soup.
It's, uh, okay.
On a slide or is it on there here?
We'll, we'll figure it out and bring you back our, that's right, the minutia. If I could just mention...
We'll start with "safe," though.
Yeah, we will.
If that's the least...
If I can make one other observation. Uh, you know, I've been with the city now, I don't know, I guess it's eight years or so. And I've been around the block once or twice on this strategic planning stuff, particularly at this level, the city level. And, uh, I can tell you that although it is difficult, and I recognize and appreciate that, that you recognize that, uh, the direction and the input and the engagement that the city council had in this process early on and kind of behind the scenes has been very important. And it has made the job easier for us because we're not having to guess what your, what your priorities are, what your, uh, desires are for the community. That has been very, very helpful for us, and that's what really allowed us to move or advance this work forward, uh, the degree to which we did. So, I just wanna thank you and, uh, let everyone else know that behind the scenes, although I get to stand up here, it's the hard work of the staff and certainly you that have allowed for this to, uh, to culminate in what it has. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Tom.
Sorry, that, that, that poses a, a question either for you or for Tom. When you, when you look at the strategic planning team, you notice that there's a member of council that's, that's absent on there? Has there been any thought of including a member of council on that team? I don't know if that's an area for discussion or something anyone is interested in exploring. And if not, nobody's feelings were hurt. I just was curious, uh, just, just to the, to the point that, that Tom makes. I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, sorry.
You know, at this point is, um, once you've adopted kind of that thirty thousand foot level and we start getting into the operational aspect, um, I imagine that the liaisons will have input, um, at each of, how their departments relate to it. But, it is operational.
Sure.
Um, and certainly, we, we'd never turn down an opportunity for you all to roll up your sleeves, um, but I, I...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I, I, we had our input at the start and I, I for one, don't believe that, uh, this type of a group put together needs to have a elected councilman on it. You know, I, I just, that's something that come back to us and then we get our, we get the final say. So, whatever, uh, we do and we did, I mean, Phil had us in here and we, we went through this originally first, which we always have on stuff like this. But, I think something like this is not a place for a city councilman.
Any other comments?
Oh, I'd have loved to have been involved.
I'm sure.
Well, thank you all.
Oh, we can always back it up. Thank you, Tom. And, and thank you to the team. I, I think then, um, council, if you could get comments back, uh, we will bring this back in two weeks. Does that seem reasonable? If you can get us any comments back in a week or if you have any questions, you, you know, you, you have various, um, people that you can ask. But, um, if you can get your comments back by next Tuesday, we'll put it back on the agenda in two weeks, uh, to discuss any feedback, any, um, questions and, um, see if, we'll lay out a plan of adoption.
To whom do we get back to?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think it's all gonna be the...
Um, certainly, you can get back to me, to Tom.
Okay.
To Tom.
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 Yeah.
Cool.
Don't mind that at all. Okay? Okay, thank you. Our next item is, um, under Public Works, our safety program update. Looks like we were really, um, ambitious with this agenda, weren't we?
Mm-hmm. Who said this?
Charlie.
I knew that.
I'll take the blade.
Okay, I did.
I saw it.
Hi, John.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon.
Where's your prop? Is that your prop?
That's it, right there. Special effects, backup material, serves multiple purposes. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about safety. And, Madam Mayor, thank you for the segue into that topic from your last topic. Um, I want to go back and do a thumbnail sketch of, of, a few years of history for you. And I know you're weary, so I'm not going to drag this out. Um, but for the benefit of the three council members who are the newest and weren't around at that time, I think it's, uh, fair to do that. Back in, uh, two thousand twelve, as part of the process for preparing for the two thousand thirteen budget, uh, I came before this group and, um, requested, uh, consideration for a safety program administrator, coordinator, that kind of a resource, uh, largely due to the, uh, situation that we had at the time where that had been outsourced to, uh, the same vendor. Uh, there was a lot of dissatisfaction with the performance of that individual and the service level was not, uh, adequate to meet the demands of the workforce at that time. And, so, I thought it would be, uh, worthwhile to consider a change. And the council at that time, uh, wisely, and, and I appreciate the sage, uh, advice and direction, requested that, uh, we go out and, uh, hire somebody to do an assessment of the safety program in its entirety and even, uh, uplifted the budget to allow for that to occur. And since that time, we have engaged with a consultant to do exactly that. Uh, it's taken much longer than I thought, but it took us probably six to nine months just to engage with the right consultant. There are not very many, uh, of qualified people in this field that are out there and available and, uh, interested in doing, um, this kind of work for us. So, we engaged Northwest, uh, Safety Services and, uh, they, in addition to doing the assessment, did some training for us and, uh, did a number of, uh, job site inspections and some jobs, uh, uh, safety analysis, uh, for us as well. So, what I want to do is give you an update on the assessment itself, uh, be as, uh, brief as possible and then talk about, uh, this, the steps going forward. So, I think we have to start fundamentally, why is safety important at all? And, uh, we have two, uh, reasons for, uh, caring about safety. One, of course, is for the employees themselves. We have a moral obligation to, uh, provide our employees with a safe and healthy work environment. Um, we have a legal obligation to fulfill as well. And in this area, we have eight different agencies that we have to deal with and comply with their regulations. They are all listed there. We also consider some guiding principles when we, um, manage the safety program in public works. Uh, the first is that safety is part of our cultural fabric. Uh, we have it represented in many different aspects of what we do, either in the, in the, uh, pursuance of, uh, operational work, maintenance work, uh, in our consideration strategically for the department. Uh, we don't look at safety as an event or, uh, a happening. It's something that is always, uh, taking place. Safety is necessary to sustain our operations. And as much as we have invested in our operations, we have to make sure that we're doing a good job of keeping those that are running it safe. Safety is an investment in the protection of our human resources. Or, another way to say that is that it is an investment in, uh, that that we have already, uh, invested in. So, it's just sustaining that investment. Safety is also an essential component of any viable, uh, concern or organization. If you don't have a good safety program and you, uh, don't take the, uh, time or con- consideration for investing in that area, it will be, um, a very much an uphill battle for any organization going forward. Uh, a fo- fully functional safety program in public works is about mainly training and education first and foremost so that people know what, uh, to do and know how to go about doing it in a safe and healthy way. It involves, uh, audits, inspecting job sites and facilities to ensure that their hazard is, uh, free as much as possible and that it involves certification and recertification. We live in that world and about seventy-five percent of our workforce, uh, has to have some form of specialty training, uh, whether it be confined space, evacuation, trench work, roadways, et cetera. And of course, uh, this, uh, last week, we saw a real live example of that put on display with the water main break at Locust Grove and Franklin. And it, it was those kind of people that were out there in the roadway managing the traffic and, and doing traffic control. Policy development and management is an important part that we have, uh, a good infrastructure and we have accountability around that to ensure that there's consistency in the execution of safety, uh, procedures and policy. And then, uh, again, it's just sustaining the investment that we've already made. Uh, I wanna get now into just three areas. The work that we've completed, the work that is in process, and the work that is left to be, uh, done. The first is, but in large part, we've, uh, spent a lot of this time in this last couple of years doing the assessment and putting that together. We've spent a great deal of time training our workforce. In fact, we have, uh, taken every staff member through basic safety training of eight hours. And we have done all of the specialty training that we needed to do to bring people up to speed and up to the level that they need to be. Keep in mind that this is training that has to reoccur every two years to fulfill the, uh, requirements of compliance. And then, uh, we finally recertified everyone in the department, uh, in the OSHA ten hour. So, uh, we're in pretty decent shape or we were heading, heading into two thousand fifteen. Uh, we're not at the present time. Uh, facility inspections, we did two of them, one for water, one for wastewater. I'm gonna, uh, report on the results of that. That's a large part of the assessment that was done. Job site audits, uh, we did a number of wells, PRV, uh, sites and things of this nature. And of course, we, on an ongoing basis, we have monthly safety committee meetings, uh, where we talk about, uh, these kind of, uh, issues and anything that, uh, might be pressing from a hazard standpoint or, uh, anything that needs to be done. Uh, we have developed a thirty, sixty, ninety day plan in two thousand fifteen. When we went into the fiscal year, we had thought we were going to have negotiations closed with the safety provider that we were working with. Uh, he disengaged with us, uh, for no apparent reason. It was hard to get him re-engaged and in fact, we never did. So, two thousand fifteen has been a very bear year for, uh, the amount of work that we wanted to do. This is work that does not go away. Uh, it doesn't disappear with time. It, uh, just continues to build up backlog and so we have a pretty significant resource gap at, at the time that we're in right now. Uh, the assessment process involved a, uh, complete and comprehensive view, review and check of all relevant, uh, documentation. I have that in front of you. In fact, uh, Madam Mayor, the, uh, safety manual is, uh, uh, four hundred and thirty-four pages long. At, uh, at this time, I think it was maybe...
Bathroom reading.
Pardon me?
Bathroom reading.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And, um, you wouldn't wanna read it when you're going to bed because it would keep you awake all night. So, suspenseful. Uh, we interviewed employees at all levels of the organization to find out what their knowledge, uh, extent was and their awareness for safety and their perceptions about safety. Uh, when we did the, uh, employee supplemental survey, we found that that was one of the biggest things that was a, uh, missing for us in the department was that people did not have adequate training in safety. They had no concept for it. They had no, uh, uh, awareness that it was available and it wasn't at that time. But, um, lots, lots of, uh, effort went into getting, capturing people's perceptions around that. We conducted site and workplace visits, summarized findings in the safety program and procedures assessment document, which I have here. We'll talk about that a little bit. bit. We used a SWOT approach in doing the assessment, so everything is captured around strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, those things that are harmful to the organization's objectives, those, those things that are helpful to the organization's objective. In a code, of course, both internal and external to the department, so I'm not going to go through the details around this. Part of the assessment involved the two facility inspections, water and wastewater. We found a number of violations in those two locations and we are referring to those as observations. So we characterized them according to the following criteria, they're prioritized. So obviously catastrophic would be the worst, it requires immediate attention. And then it kind of goes down from there in terms of degree of severity, critical, moderate, minor, and then more of a general finding that might involve some either financial or security matters as well as safety. So we took and catalogued these and these are two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifteen, excuse me, different safety observations that were found in the two utilities. Water had thirty-eight and wastewater had a hundred and seventy-seven. Very, very different operations, of course, and wastewater being the more complex of the two in terms of the equipment, the, the footprint that it's on and, and that sort of thing. Water in, in terms of their footprint is really the city, so they're in vehicles a lot and so there's a different kind of safety consideration there. But you can see that these things range from, everything from electrical to the, the use of hand tools and compressed gases, the storage of chemicals in, in the appropriate cabinets, the communication around hazards so that things are labeled correctly, that sort of thing. All of these are detailed in those books I have sitting there. Along with, so there's the classification of the hazard, there's the location of it and the regulation that is associated with that hazard, as well as photographs of the hazard itself. And some of these are very concerning because it's just not having the top of mind to take care of some things like expiration of eye wash equipment, expiration of things that are important to keep you safe and we've allowed them to lapse. So just a whole lot of good stuff here that we didn't know about before the assessment. So that's why I think it's very wise of you to hold us to, hold us accountable to that. These are the observations by priority. Thankfully, we had no observations that were catastrophic. We had a number of them that were critical and a number of them that were moderate and minor and then a few general kinds of things. I'm, I'm pleased to say at this point, we have been able to address many, if not most of these areas of concern. And now what we don't know is because this is just a snapshot in time, you always have new things coming into the funnel, you know, as techno, technology and equipment changes, as your staff changes, that sort of thing. We've hired people who have come from another municipality who have never been trained in safety and they, they were there for twelve to fifteen years in that other municipality, doing the same kind of work that we hired them for. So that's really things that are kind of unheard of and that we want to correct. But a snapshot in time just gives you a picture of what it looked like then. As time moves on, obviously, things change. The work in process right now, we are in this thirty, sixty, ninety day plan. Dale Bolthouse, Deputy Director of Utilities, as well as Brian Kerr, the Chief Water Operator and myself, put that together and this is part of that plan, so we're carrying through on our commitment to give you an update on that. One of the areas of missing for us is the training of new hires. We did not consider the impact of that, of bringing people new into the organization and the length of time it took to get them scheduled in a training class was a little longer than what was comfortable. So we have bought the materials to do the new hire orientation. It's a video set of materials and we'll conduct that orientation ourselves. We had four specific projects at the wastewater treatment plant that were designed and launched into construction this year. Those will be scheduled for completion by the end of summer certainly, probably by midsummer. And those addressed four areas that were of large concern to, to the, to the workforce and, and also in a, in a way that was concerning to, to us in a larger sense because it brought us to a realization that we design a lot of buildings and we design a lot of infrastructure and we don't consider safety in the design of that. And so that's one of the things that will change going forward. We need to address the assessment findings that are left undone at this point. There's still some things that we haven't completed, like some of the critical and more moderate things that are left undone. There's not many of them, but they're there. We have to pay attention to our vehicles and we have people in the roadway that just the lights on the truck aren't as sufficient to provide them protection from vehicles that are in the traffic with them. And so we are putting reflective tape on the vehicles as well to highlight, highlight that a little better. And we'll continue to do our safety committee meetings. What's left to be done is we have to find some resources. We either need to find another service provider or we need to hire somebody and bring them on staff and get it done. We need to complete the assessment work, particularly around risk, risk management and accident investigation and job safety analysis training. We don't have anybody trained in that area either. Excuse me. We have specialty training that's probably the, the highest priority in terms of training other than the new hire orientation and that is just to make sure that people that are in these areas of confined space, trenches and the roadways, that are using equipment like forklifts and things of that nature, are doing that with this, all of the skills in needed for safe operation. Facility inspections, we'll probably go back through that process again and see what the difference has been between the first level of inspections and the second. That should give us a good idea of how well we're doing in the areas of housekeeping, keeping track of certain things like chemicals and the labeling of chemicals and things of that nature. Job safety audits, which, or job site audits, excuse me, those are things that are ongoing all the time as the infrastructure expands and as the, as the structures age and, and that sort of thing. They're, they're going through life too, just like we are. And if you don't keep, care, keep them up to date and you don't maintain them and if you don't identify the safety hazards associated with that, which is part of the maintenance why, by the way, particularly in the area of electrical wiring and things of that nature. And we need to update our safety program managerial, manual, manual, excuse me, that four hundred and thirty-four pages probably could go down, you know, in, if we're all thinking about saving trees, but it probably won't, just because of the number of regulations that come into play and the amount of effort it takes to address those. I wanted to give you some idea of what we've done financially and here is the budget and actual spend for the last four years. You can see in eleven and twelve, we didn't do a lot. We didn't actually spent less in 2013, even though you approved for a greater amount of budget, but that, that was just simply we couldn't find anybody, excuse me, to, to help us with that. It was not, we had an RFQ out on the streets for quite a while. We got one response. We brought the one response in, interviewed them, talked to them, and they turned out to be not qualified for the work that we needed them to do. So we had to go back and start looking all over again. Two thousand and fifteen, we have not hardly spent anything out of the budget because we haven't done any work in that regard. The situation is that we have taken the approach of meeting our safety requirements by depending upon others. Using a vendor has proven to be unsuccessful, at least in the few times that we've done it and we haven't had very good fortune in finding people that are, well, let's say, compatible with our needs and expectations. Training of the new hires, completion of safety projects, facility inspections, job safety audits and especially training still needs to be completed for this year and going forward on a full-time basis. We believe we have a full-time job here. We also believe that we, since we haven't done anything yet this year, that we're probably fifteen hundred hours in arrears with the work that has, has not been done. That means we've got pretty good backlog to burn off. So it's going to be a challenge for anybody coming into this position, if indeed we hire somebody, to, to take that bull by the horns and, and get us back into where we need to be. I would say too, this is one of the reasons why we're coming to you now, instead of waiting for the budgetary process and to integrate this request into the 2016 budget, is because it just takes too darn long to hire people, find people, that sort of thing. And we have to act with a little bit of a sense of urgency here. And we have no resource. I wanted to give you a sense of what it would cost out, to outsource versus in-house. This is, 2013 and 14, those are actual outsourced dollars that we've spent. It doesn't, it isn't representative of the amount of work that is demanded, it's the amount of work that was done. So the demand was much greater than the hours that are represented there. In 2016, and I just established a standard of 2,080 hours, which is a full-time equivalent, it would be at seventy-three dollars and fifty cents an hour externally, that would be a hundred and fifty-two thousand. We can do that job with our own dedicated personnel on staff for half that. And so to get that done would require us to have another $12,000 added to the base budget in the personnel area so that we can, we can actually move forward with that and do the work that's needed. What is that work? Well, this is a kind of a pie chart that represents the full-time piece of this. Two thousand and eighty hours, about eighty percent of that is wrapped up in three, three areas. Nine hundred and fifty-five in training, three seventy-five in audits and one ninety in the area of job safety analysis. Then, then the rest of it, the biggest chunk is in policy and administering standard operating procedures, things of that nature, and then the rest of it is just in the little stuff that goes along with it, reporting and things of that nature.
So John, what makes you think that you can, if you can't find a consultant, that you can find a qualified employee?
Well, consultants come with lots of strings attached to them. They want to work on a contract basis. They're not, and we're not the only customer that they typically have, so there's not a, you know, you have to find somebody that's going to fit your needs and we're a little fish in a big pond, frankly speaking. Now, that doesn't quite answer your question because we haven't gone after a safety program person yet. So I do know that we have looked at six or seven municipalities and all of them have dedicated safety personnel. They got them from somewhere. So we would have to probably turn over some rocks and go out and hunt, just like we do for all the other positions that we look for. Now, you know, I don't know the answer to how, how successful we can be until we try.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, oh, excuse me.
Mr. Bird.
Go ahead, John, go ahead, go ahead and then I'll come here.
I just wanted to make that recommendation and I don't have an amendment with me tonight. I wanted to mainly bring you up to date with what we've been doing and also put forth the idea and get your support for moving forward with an amendment. And if you are supportive of doing that, I would be happy to come back in a week or two and present that amendment to you. And it would be in the neighborhood of approximately for an additional $12,000 over and above our base budget. Now, part of our base budget has been used for this consultant, so about seventy percent of our base budget is for personnel related or resource related costs and we would have to add that to the 12,000 so the, but the base budget line for safety would drop down and the personnel line would come up. That would be also a fully loaded cost, so. Councilman Bird?
Madam Ma, Madam Mayor, John, go back to your list of, of your bad cords and all that crap.
Those, that two hundred and fifteen worth of crap? This one?
Right there.
Yeah.
That has all been taken care of, I take it?
About ninety percent of it has been.
How come not a hundred? I, I, do you, do you, I mean, and there's companies that got a lot more employees and do a lot more dangerous work than we do. Do you have weekly toolbox safety meetings with all your guys where Tracy or somebody sits down with everybody and they go over everything and they list what cords? Or if you're out there, or Tom's out there, carry a pair of dikes, you see a bad cord, cut it. OSHA would, I mean, we wouldn't have enough millions to pay the fine. Safety has to be done every hour and it is up to the individual, but we've got a lead in and it don't take a full-time safety guy to do it. It takes just planning and making sure that you have safety meetings so everybody's doing it. A new hire, yes, you should give him six or eight hours. You've got chemicals and stuff. Out at the wastewater treatment plant, you've got machinery and stuff. They should know how to do it. But everybody should have, safety is common sense and we've all, there not a one of us in this room that hadn't done something stupid in our life and we're lucky to be alive. But that, I mean, that can't go on. I mean, bad cords, power tools, guards off. Have you ever seen a, have you ever seen a saw blade come, a twenty-inch saw blade come apart?
No, I haven't.
With no guards? I've never seen one come apart with no guards, thank God we had guards. It, this safety has, but I don't think you solve it by hiring a full- It, this safety has, but I don't think you solve it by hiring a full-time employee. I think you solve it by getting First Link or somebody like that out there to set you up a program and then do it with what you've got, with the employees you got out there. And Tom can walk around out there once in a while as be in the deal and take a pair of dikes with him and he sees something, cut it. I did it.
There you go, Tom, another job.
Madam Mayor.
Didn't mean to set you up like that.
Mr. Zaromba.
I appreciate the, the presentation and I agree with Councilman Bird's premise, but not with his conclusion from that premise. The amount of time it takes to prepare a program, make sure the program is followed, in my opinion, is worth a dedicated person. It, it is. This is an activity that we have attempted to have done by hiring outside people, and it was a legitimate part of the budget. I understand the difficulty of keeping somebody like that engaged when they have other things to do and we're, our demands are getting bigger and bigger. And as, as with anything that the city outsources, my discussion with my liaison departments is always, I'm happy to hear you consider whether something should continue as a consultant or be brought in-house. As we grow and our situation changes, I'm glad that is always being reviewed. This is a subject that came up the last time that I was liaison to the Public Works Department, and I've cycled around and now I am again the liaison, and it's still on the table. I personally believe we have satisfactorily got to the point where we need an in-house person doing this. For the cost of twelve thousand dollars beyond what we already anticipated paying, I think that's a fair thing to do. And I guess I compare that to, what if we don't? As Councilman Bird pointed out, there are dangers all over these facilities and out in the road when they're not in the facilities that people to be made, need to be made aware of. And ye- and yes, it is an individual responsibility, but there are some things that they need to be told first before it becomes their individual responsibility to follow what they've been told. And I think an expert is an important person to have on staff. As Councilman Bird pointed out, there could be penalties from some of the regulatory agencies, but not even that. Think of an injury. We don't want an injury to happen to any of our people. The downstream effects of that are, are not pleasant either and expensive. We don't want damage to occur to our equipment. All of these are related to safety and, and I'm half agreeing with Mr. Bird, but I'm on the other half saying I believe this is all the more reason that we need somebody who is dedicated to that job. And yes, it's everybody's responsibility to participate, but I, a dedicated trainer, I'm sure the fire department, which also has dangerous equipment, has a dedicated training. I believe it's a deputy chief at that level to do the safety training. And I personally support that for Public Works as well.
Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Let me follow up on my, my biggest concern about hiring in-house. Something comes up and you go fifty-fifty one way or the other. And one of us elected officials, or the mayor, or Tom, or John, go down and says, no, don't bring it up now. We're going to wait. It's an employee. We're, if you hire an outsourced like First Link, and I think that's the name, I can't remember, John Conkey.
Yep.
It, you know, that you either do it right then or they just red tag you and call OSHA or whoever. That, that's, that's my one concern. And plus, once we get this program set up, and you got four hundred and eighty-three pages of safety program, you just said, or four hundred and thirty-three, which can be condensed down, I'm sure, John, but
I'd hope so.
Thank God I didn't have to write one that big. I, but I, I, I think sometimes outside eyes are better than in, in-house eyes. But that's neither, however we go that way, I don't, I'm, yeah, I do care. But my main concern is that we get these things taken care of right now, not ninety days from now, not a week from now. If we got bad equipment out there or bad situation, we guys got working around it, get it fixed.
And if, if I might, Councilman.
I'm sure Tammy will give you the money. I mean, she'll, she don't want it anymore. We don't want that kind of stuff.
I'm not going to give you money. This council is the only one that can give you money.
Well, you get it fixed.
John, I, I guess the question I asked Tom was if this is a challenge of other cities, is there an opportunity to join together and look at a, a valley-wide approach, a multiple-agency approach, something, I, I don't know if this is a full-time position. I'm sure we can always find some things to justify it, but you really want a person that's totally focused on the aspect of safety. And if you're having a hard time getting a, a safety company to commit, asking Boise and Napa and Caldwell and, and others to see how we can work together for a multi-agency or a valley-wide solution.
Madam Mayor, if I could respond to that.
Well, it was a kind of a question.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we've thought about shared resources before, or cost sharing, or something on that order to try to mitigate the cost of it, number one. But what we run into is the demands that we have on that resource are so high, just with our city alone. And if you think about bringing other jurisdictions into it, let's say that the city of Meridian, city of Kuna, and the city of Napa all shared that resource. While we all have competing priorities and we all have different issues that we deal with, that that resource would be pulled in so many different directions. I don't know that we would get the leverage out of that resource that we would get if we managed it as a dedicated resource to the city of Meridian. Now, if, you know, if you set up a consortium of the, those kind of resources, that may ultimately be where this thing goes in the long term because they're, they're scarce resources. I don't think they're churning enough subject matter experts out. And a lot of them will go into the high-tech areas and work in industrial hygiene areas, earn a lot more money than we're able to pay, that kind of thing, so. I don't, I don't know, in my own mind, I don't know how that would work. I mean, if we just split your job, for example, amongst three jurisdictions, you have three different communities that have very different needs, very different views of how to address those needs. Would that be satisfactory to the resource that's being pulled in so many different directions? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, and I would imagine if I was the, that individual, I'd make sure I knew what the priorities of each of my bosses were and would stay focused on that, but that might be easier said than done.
It's a nice thought.
Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
John, I think, I think truthfully, once you get some, you guys get something set up, the safety program set up, get all these taken care of. And, and the employees have their six or eight hour, I know the OSHA programs, I think it's a two-hour if I remember right.
Two-hour.
And it's a good, it's a good, it's a good program.
Actually, ten-hour.
Every new, every new employee should go through it. But anyway, once you get it set up, I think your people within the plant and, and stuff can manage themselves as far as safety. If everybody knows, you know, if I got a bad power cord, get it over to whoever's the boss, get it out of here. Another thing with power cords, you need to make sure that we're using the right strength. You don't use a number six when you need a number twelve. So I, I know it's, I know I'm being a negative horse in the rear, but I just, I just think we can do it within-house. I think we've got enough people, smart people, that can do it within-house once we get it. We might have to have somebody come in and help us get these meetings going and stuff like that. But we should have, and John, as deputy chief, you should, every week when they have those safety meetings, you should get a copy of the minutes of what we discussed from each one of them and have it on file. I don't know why public have to do what private does.
I would say, Councilman, that a lot of that work is going on already. We do have an established program that's pretty well-defined. We've just had difficulty resourcing the subject matter expertise of that program. So we're, and I would say this, the staff hasn't paid attention to safety. We have one of the lowest incident rates and time loss rates around for any industry. Our mod rate for workers' comp is very low. So you don't get there totally by accident, no pun intended, but
You said, oh, listen.
Yeah. But you know, part of this too, is when you are trying to be the best, you have to find the things in your closet that aren't doing, aren't fitting that, aren't going to help you with that. These are the things in the closet we have to clean up, and we have cleaned up a number of them. So I want to make sure that it's clear to you that we're probably a lot better off than what you might think. And we have tried to engage with First Link and to no avail.
John, and Bob, don't, Conkey, don't reply.
Pardon me?
Bob, don't reply.
We, we did not, we met with First Link. They, in fact, they were one of the first ones we met with. And they wanted to do more construction work.
Yeah, I understand that.
And so we said, okay. And that's when we found Northwest Safety because they broke off of First Link. They just kind of parted ways, excuse me, parted ways.
No, being out there, as much as I've been out to the plant, when this come up, I could not believe it. That plant, to be truthful, other than it being a wastewater treatment plant, you can eat off the pavement out there, you know? I wouldn't want to, but you could.
I wouldn't advise it.
It's clean. And then I see there you got pressure hose and all this stuff going bad. I'm going, what are we doing? Anyway, get it solved.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So, John, I apologize now because we've kind of gone in a circle around this, but could you just clarify, you're, I mean, you're asking for an FTE, right? So what would be the daily duty? Is this person training? Is this person going around looking for things that are wrong, maybe a combination between what the daily duties? There we go.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Malone. This, this represents what two thousand eighty hours looks like in a year. And it would be very similar to what it might be on a day-to-day basis as well. A lot of training, lot of inspections and site inspections, job audits, things of that nature. We're in the, we're in the business out in the field all the time, out in the roadways all the time. And so, you know, those places have to be inspected. We don't want to put our workers in harm's way or run the risk that they could be there. So this is something that the safety manager would do, is to go out and do those inspections, take people with them that are appropriate subject matter experts in their area, whether it be wastewater, water inspections, or engineering, and make sure that we have a good record of the condition of the, the, either the environment that these guys are operating in or in the facility that's being inspected, like a lift station or something of that nature. So they would be doing that on a daily basis in addition to the reporting that needs to be done, things of that nature. I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
So if, if, if I'm reading this chart, we're looking at three days of training a week. Correct? If I do my math right? Or where this person would be conducting, I mean, if, if they work an eight-hour day, they're looking at, I guess, two and a half days to three days a week?
Possibly. Sometimes maybe a little more, sometimes a little less. A lot of that depends on who, what replacement workers we hire that have had training or not had training. Some of it is dependent upon, like sometimes we, we run our basic safety block. We run that in big blocks. So we'll have twenty people to a class and we'll do five classes and it might take place over the course of a week or two weeks, or we might spread it out.
Follow-up. Sorry, and I, again, I don't want to jump into minutia, but you feel confident that number's accurate with the amount of training hours that are needed out there right now?
As far as the nine fifty-five?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Do they get five weeks off?
Pardon me?
My own.
They get, they get two weeks of vacation, and what I factored in here was six days of sick leave a year. And then some time for, the rest of that time is for attending their own training and conferences and things of that nature for their own education. Whether it's exactly that or not, I'm not sure.
Madam Mayor, one more question for me. John, what's, what, you said that you got about ninety percent of that list handled. What's, what's keeping you from getting the other ten percent done?
Of the two hundred and fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Time and resources.
Okay.
Now, I want, I want to caution people here. Once you do that list, that doesn't mean everything's clean and cool.
No.
It means that you just get to start over again.
Well, hopefully we've educated the, excuse me. We've educated the employees to look out for the stuff that we've got now so it don't happen again, right? They get a bad power tool or something, it goes somewhere to file thirteen until it's fixed.
I, I guess, John, my question is, you've, you've prioritized the different findings. And I am hopeful that the critical, the, the urgent have all been taken care of because that's one thing that isn't acceptable, is that those items that are, that cause some safety concerns to our employees, I hope they're not that ten percent that hasn't been addressed.
No, I would, Madam Mayor, I would say that we have definitely taken No, I would, uh, Madam Mayor, I would say that we have definitely taken the critical ones and taken care of them first. Now...
I didn't want to assume, so...
Yeah.
Because I know what that definition meant, but...
The, the exception are the four projects that are being cons, in construction at the wastewater treatment plant at this time, that are, are nearly done, but not quite done. So that would be the exception to that.
And those critical things are being built into a daily checklist or a weekly safety meeting, as Mr. Bird mentioned.
I can say that that happens. I don't know, uh, and I can't say with certainty that it happens as consistently as you would like, uh, in all areas. Some areas, it might happen every week. For, for example, in the inspection area, uh, they, they do it very often, and in other, uh, areas, they may do it less often.
Madam Mayor. John, are you talk, you're talking about Benetton, what Benetton's doing out there?
No.
Oh, you're talking about what we're doing ourselves?
Just operationally, what do we do on a normal basis?
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah. But I, I know Benetton has their weekly toolbox meetings.
Madam Mayor.
Hi, Smiley.
Um, John, so is there any way to incentivize the current employees to, um, you know, for clean audits, or for finding issues, or not having, you know, not having problems? It seems if, you know, it might be a lot more cost efficient anyway, as far as that part goes.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilman, uh, Woman Malone.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John.
My mouth is kind of dry at this point. But, you know, there's lots of different incentives around safety, and some of them work, some of them don't. Um, I, I prefer to make it a part of our cultural fabric, that it is, uh, in the, in the same light that Councilman Bird looks at it. It should be something that everybody does without forethought and, uh, having to, um...
Sounds like a railroad job to me.
So, um, yes, there are, there are incentives. And, you know, then you could get people doing the right thing for the wrong reason. Uh, I think we have taken the tact in Public Works, that we want an educated workforce. We want a workforce that's trained. They are now. They know, uh, far more now than they did two years ago about safety, about how to take care of things. So I think we're much further down the road, and the, the incentive, the largest incentive that anybody has is to come to work and go home safely.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We'll get into this. I think if there's a proposal coming forward in subsequent weeks, but, but I'm not so sure. Councilman Bird's comments and concerns are off base. Um, it, back to your list, if there's two hundred and fifteen items, ninety percent are done, and we're talking that twenty-some-odd items still aren't fixed and cleaned up, and seeing that the, the services and tasks to be performed by a new employee, none of which are go-fix and clean up these omissions or problems, the new employee doesn't satisfy the lack of time and resources to go fix them. Got twenty-odd deficiencies out there, so that'll be part of my thought process on whether or not adding the new employees is appropriate. Looking at the list, not knowing the details, we'll get into it later, if there's, there's an employee that brings a handmade tool to use, it sounds so grossly unsafe, it, I don't know why you work here.
Yes.
And, and, and I don't know the details of anything, but there's got to be some omissions that I would think, just your own internal management and operations would say, you know, you're trained on safety policies, you know, X, Y, and Z in particular, and they're not optional, and if you violate them, we don't tolerate it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm probably mischaracterizing the level of, of management, but that was just some of the initial concern that we'll discuss if the proposal's brought forward.
Well, I'd like that opportunity to talk about it, and I think we can effectively address some of that and most of it, I hope. Uh, you know, a lot of these practices that we're talking about have been around for a long time. The guys made their own pry tools because you couldn't get them somewhere else. Uh, or they may have had, uh, disinterested management in supporting them and getting that, because they didn't want to spend the money. I don't know the answer to those questions. But I do know that we've identified that there are hazards that have been in the workplace, that have been addressed and are being taken care of in other areas too. So, uh, that's, to me, that's the most, uh, important thing. Going forward, it's important that we sustain that kind of environment, so that it's very much like a lean environment, where you set things in place and you standardize the operations, and you sustain it going forward by keeping people educated and trained up on safety.
Mr. Sarumba.
Madam Mayor, I, I just, in an environment where we expect high productivity out of...
Are, are you, is your thing on?
It, it is on. I'm not close enough to it.
I can't hear him, so I didn't know if you could or not.
Okay, hopefully, this is better. That, what I was gonna say is, in, in an environment where there are dangers, but we expect productivity and busyness from the employees, there's a tendency, when you're very busy, to maybe cut a few safety corners, um, to forget where our ladder really ought to go, and because this is where you used it, you lean it against the wall, um, because it's expedient to what you're doing at the morning, at the moment, and tomorrow you're gonna come back and need that ladder in the same place. The two hundred and some items that were recently identified that need to be fixed, probably developed over time. They were discovered because of a safety audit. They've been being worked on to be fixed, but there has not been another safety audit done since then, and I think John has made the point, maybe there's a few off the original list that are still not fixed. We're working on it, but we haven't done the safety audit to see what the new list is. There's another list of things going on out there now, that somebody just hasn't thought of, or perhaps they're too busy to do it exactly right. And there does need to be somebody whose specific job it is to look those things over, to bring them to people's attention, to remind them day after day. And I realize, if, if, if it's a employee problem where they're just not getting it, or they're not buying into the safety features, then, uh, that's an employment issue. But there are good employees out there that sometimes just aren't thinking about that one aspect. And, uh, I, I'm fully supportive of having a person whose job that is, is to go around and remind everybody, and to do these safety audits on a regular basis, of saying, "Okay, this is slipping. This needs to have attention again." Um, because I'd be willing to bet, there's another list of a hundred things, probably, that the next safety audit would find. Hopefully, they're in the lower end of, of the importance as, as we go along. But, uh, I gotta say, I support this request and this budget amendment, because I think this is something we need to be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, what I'm gathering from this is, what is the direction for John? So, I'm not gathering anything.
If you ask me, Madam Mayor, my direction is write up the amendment for this year's budget for twelve thousand dollars to supplement what's already in the budget, and try and find somebody to hire in-house. That would be my direction.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roundtree.
I've been trying to absorb all of this, because safety is an issue for me, and, and I've mentioned several times that, um, probably the biggest issue for all of us is, is vehicular safety. As long as the city continues with policies that allow people to drive around using their cell phones, uh, you know, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to hiring a specific safety person to, to deal with issues that, in a lot of cases, should be being done on the job site, uh, based on some of the, some of the violations. Um, but my biggest concern about this is, is we have a four hundred and some-page safety manual, that's a accumulation of who knows what-all, that absolutely nobody in the world is gonna, no, no working employee is gonna go grab and, and read. Somebody's got to read it, and somebody's got to implement it, and one person isn't gonna do that. Uh, it's, it's got to be in the culture. And even if we hired a person, I don't see it getting done, because it's, it's a monumental job and multiple-year job, just to sort through the manual, let alone trying to get something in place. So I'm still of the mind that there's got to be somebody out there that we can hire and make that transition, because we, we need those outside sources. I do not see one individual coming in here and doing this job, the job you want accomplished, without them and us having to hire consultants to get some of this stuff in order. I would like to see, let's get a consultant online and in order, so if we are lucky enough to find an individual that can implement this program, we've got a program for them to step into and do. I, I don't, given what you're telling me, I don't see that one individual's gonna come in here, and we've got to do it right now, is gonna come in and make a difference for another two or three years. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm not wanting to put that off. I think, I think we need somebody to come in and put a program together for us, so we know what the program is, so we can see if we can find somebody that can do it. Uh, me, it's, it's, it's wishful thinking, personally. And I understand how difficult it is to find qualified people. I fully understand that, but there's got to be an organization out there, or maybe it's multiple organizations, one that deals with, with, uh, electrics, one that deals with, uh, manual labor, one that deals with, uh, heavy equipment, one that deals with, uh, roadway stuff. And there's a lot of individuals that do that, um, and there's a lot of stuff in that particular area that's free. Um, so I'm just at a loss of why we think we can accomplish this with a staff person, uh, at, at the level or the lack of detail or level that we have right now. Um, I, I, I think that there's more immediacy to get a program in place, uh, that sorts through all of this, so somebody can step in. W- w- once we have that, then I think we're in a position to say, "Okay, we do or we don't need an individual. We do or we don't need a, 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 a couple individuals that can do this area and that area, and do something else, whether it's inspections or, uh, wha- whatnot." I, to me, it's just too much. And I don't, I don't think the seventy-seven thousand dollar is fully loaded. You gotta keep that person current with the regulations. They've got to have training. You're gonna have outside consultants coming in, doing specialized training in safety areas that that individual's not gonna be able to do, unless that individual's traveling all the time, going to training sessions. So he gets to be a, or she gets to be a train-the-trainer type of person that can bring it back. So to, to me, there's a lot of things that haven't been thought through. And, and not that I am trying to put this off, but I think we need to think through a little more in detail.
Okay, um, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilman Roundtree, thank you for those, uh, thoughts and that input. I would, uh, say this, when we come back to you with an amendment, those questions that you ask will be addressed. Those thoughts that you have about that, I don't know if we can put them to bed entirely, because sometimes the proof of that is in the execution of the strategy, and, and it, uh, it plays out over time, so sometimes you don't always have the benefit of looking forward and knowing what the outcome is gonna be. But the plan is that we can do more by directing that resource ourselves in the right places, in the right ways, than trying to find somebody who will sell us their organization, and then we have to compete for the resources within that organization with other agencies. Uh, and, and we, we will lose out most of the time on that deal, unless we up the ante. And one of the things that we've tried to do is to be, uh, fiscally responsible about our approach here. And maybe we're being too conservative with it. I, I, I don't think so in my, in my heart. I think we're doing the right, right thing in terms of making this kind of a recommendation and moving in this direction. But, uh, I leave that to you to decide that, so...
So, John, when you, you bring this back on to an agenda item, um, a, a job description, um, what other cities are doing, um, primarily the cities in the Treasure Valley, uh, if they're experiencing the same thing. But then taking what Councilman Roundtree just talked about, and looking at what your, your different, uh, safety, training, specific needs are, the categories, and what consulting firms are out there that would likely, um, bid work on, or be able to provide that kind of expertise, um, and do a cost comparison. Uh, I, I guess, just trying to show two different options, and, and compare the, certainly the, the employee option to what others, what conclusion they came to, and how you have one person that can, um, address the safety challenges of all the different aspects of your safety program. Safety is a priority, and I appreciate that you're bringing this, and that, um, your department continues to focus on the safety aspect, because that's, should be the number-one priority of Public Works to your, to our employees. But I, it's just trying to be able to put in front of everyone, so you can digest it, and certainly, if you can get that out in advance of the meeting, to give people an opportunity to, to digest the information. And if you could please share, what is the remaining safety aspects, that ten percent that hasn't been addressed, and specifically what that is? So we have an idea of what's remaining to be done, so you show the nexus to the employee, and what are those ongoing public safety aspects that aren't even part of that report, but are part of a public safety or a safety training person? Okay? If you just understood that, I, I think you're awesome, whatever I just said.
Mayor, just for, uh, not to delay the conversation, but we did go out to the other cities and check, uh, with them in terms of the resources that they have. And I believe that, if you can see this slide, it shows you what the various cities are doing. And they all have, uh, the ones that we talked to, anyway, have dedicated resources that were, uh, part of their, either their risk management or safety program or both. In the case of Boise, for example, six of those six FTEs, uh, I believe four of them are trainers. That's all they do.
And are they only, so that, that's the detail that if you can provide, or... And are they only, so that's the detail that if you can provide, are they for all departments, citywide? Are they just public works specific? You know, just, I think there's seven people up here struggling with various levels of questions and we don't know what we don't know to even ask. So you'll have to help us with that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Myler.
Also, and maybe you've already asked the question, but how is this working for them? You know, these cities may have said, well, what are other cities doing? Well, look, they're doing this, so they add it. Is that working for them? Has it made a difference? I think a report like that would really be helpful in our decision-making process as well.
Okay, we'll have those answers for you when we come back.
Any other information specific you're looking for? I think Charlie gave a good list. Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that it was gonna be short.
You tried.
I gave it my shot anyway, so thank you very much for the insights.
It wasn't your fault. It was long. Don't forget your books.
You forgot your prop.
Tom might have to read that four hundred and thirty-three.
Well, I did, Mike knows that he's following in the footsteps of John, who always brings props, so I'm really thrilled. You brought a prop. And it's clean.
I couldn't be up, John, I don't know that I could upstage four hundred and fifty-three pages of safety documentation, but I thought it was appropriate given the fact that as a young boy, I grew up in love with models. I would put them together, play with them. And then the last twenty years as a servant in the Air Force, they would just decorate my office. So today I come before you to discuss our annual utility rates update and then also some future considerations, but it's really dependent upon a model that is much different than that model that's right in front of you. This one doesn't talk back at all, but the model that I've been working with and our utilities analyst, Alex Freitag, has been working with the last few months, it talks back to you every time you make an input to it. And many of you are very familiar with the model. I believe you were all present when we provided last year's annual utility rates update to you and you got to see the picture of that model. Well, today, we hope to provide you an update to that and then also answer any questions you may have. We do have some recommendations that we'd like to discuss as well, so I'll get started. I think it all starts with discussing a little bit about the enterprise fund. We'll talk about the model itself, some recommendations, future considerations that we have in mind that we'd like to present to you, and then also just have a good discussion So here is basically what the enterprise fund is all about. We have inputs, which we really have two customer classes that drive the inputs to our enterprise fund in terms of revenue sources. One predominantly are our rate payers and those come in the forms of our base and usage rates for water and sewer. And secondarily, our second biggest customer class in terms of revenue are the developers and the contractors and those revenue sources come in the form of assessment fees or connection fees. I'll kinda use that interchangeably, but they're essentially the same thing. When they, when we have a developer that wants to develop, we assess what it's going to take them to connect, what our system can handle, and then we charge them in terms of connecting to them depending upon those assessment fees. Some other miscellaneous income and then republic services all drop down into our enterprise fund. And then from there, obviously, we have outputs, our expenses. A large majority of that is our capital improvement plan for water and wastewater. Secondarily, followed by personnel operations and maintenance. And then we do have some, as Stacy commented on earlier today, we do support and share through interfund transfers, folks like our legal department, IT, HR, finance, we share in some of those expenses as well. A good look at our first customer class is all about accounts and account growth. Specifically on this chart, I'll draw your attention to the blue graph or the blue columns and those are our water accounts. So we currently have right at about thirty thousand water accounts in the city of Meridian. Right next to them, the gray graph are our sewer accounts. Difference between the two are primarily irrigation. If you're, if you have an irrigation-only account, there's no reason to flush. So that's the difference between the two. So as you can see, we've had steady growth in account growth since FY oh eight. What you see also there is the red line, which is our revenue. And it was a little low in oh eight, oh nine, and ten, but during those years was when we saw and you approved a increase to the rates, which really brought up revenue commencement with accounts. So what you see now is that our revenue tracks in alignment with our account growth. And I'll be happy to project that year-to-date, we're in alignment with where we were last year, about a two and a half to three percent growth of utility accounts. With this, the growth provides predictability, which lends to greater fund stability, as I've mentioned. So this is our stable source of revenue. This is the second class that I was talking about earlier in terms of revenue and that is our developers and our contractors. And we get revenue from them in means of assessments. So on this graph, you'll see the light blue area primarily are, well, those all represent our residential assessments or connections. In the blue area, you have multifamily and you also have single dwelling families, residential units. In the green area, which is a smaller percentage, is our commercial assessment revenue. So you can see in the downturn in the economy, when growth slows down, this revenue source is very variable and this slows down as well. But as you can see from twelve through fourteen, and I'm happy to let you know today, that projections show that FY fifteen will land at, or a little bit higher in terms of connections as FY fourteen. So we are counting on the growth of this community and the growth of our developers to continue as we forecast our budget for assessments or connection fees into the And this last chart is the overall fund revenue. The blue area is obviously our primary customer classes, which come from our utility rate payers. And the gray area on top are what I just mentioned, the assessment fees. Down below, we have some miscellaneous, excuse me, miscellaneous revenue, things like meter sales, plan reviews, franchise fees, things like that. A good thing to mention here in terms of projections, we are projecting through account growth, assessment revenue, we will land or be slightly above where we were in fourteen. So what it tells us is that we are experiencing growth, but we're experiencing stability too, which allows us for better planning and preparation. And before I move into the rate model, the rate model really started back in about two thousand and eight for public works here at the city of Meridian. It allows for multiple scenarios to be analyzed, enables us to make informed decisions about financial position, provides increased predictability, and it minimizes the impact on the enterprise fund by helping us avoid unforeseeable expenditures. Here's some inputs very quickly, what you are very familiar with and actually approved and agreed upon, operating reserve. These are things in the model that stay constant or have a little bit of variation so that we account for them when we're putting in all of our projects and our revenue and our expenses and things like that. We are holding four months of operating reserve, which accounts to right now about five point six million dollars to keep both our utilities operating if something were to happen. We have an emergency reserve and you can see the breakdown right there. We do maintain a regulatory reserve. We started this a few years ago and it started at two million and then we had another two million and compounded to four, then we had another two million and six. So this year's rate model shows eight million in regulatory reserves. I'll touch a little bit more on that later. Here's the rest of the items that are the inputs to the current rate model. And the last one, as you're familiar with, we are reflecting the recently adopted utility rates and sewer connection fee increases that we brought to you last year and then the sewer connection fee was implemented on one January. So those are also, those increased revenue sources or amounts are also reflected in the rate model. Internal assumptions, execution rates are very important to us. We align them with historicals and projected rates to include how we're gonna execute on revenue, personnel, O and M, and the CIP. External assumptions, we have to take into consideration personnel costs increase every year. Also, construction cost inflator. So the engineering news record talks about a three percent for construction cost inflator and then we also use the CPI, Consumer Product Price Index, excuse me, and right now that's hovering around two percent, so we included that into the model as well. Here is a picture of what all of those items that I just went over, how they reflect the fund when it comes out. So I'll explain this very quickly and then draw upon a few key areas. The orange line at the top or the top line is our ending fund balance. That includes all the reserves I previously mentioned. That's all of it. That's the whole bucket that we have. The blue line going across the middle is, we have separated it by utility. So the blue line going across the middle is our water division. And then what you notice is the black line and the green line down below, wastewater is a huge influencer, as you are very aware of, on our fund right now. So this really drives the black line, which is the undesignated ending fund balance, which obviously does not include reserves. So what I'll draw your attention to is, are the circles that I've just identified on there. So this is current projection. So if you look at the circle to the left, it shows where our undesignated ending fund balance will cross into a negative. But we still have reserves that will carry us, if you look over to the right circle, till twenty twenty-two. Essentially, what this graph suggests to you, will not really suggest, what it tells you, is that if we continue the way we are right now, we need to start dipping into reserve spending by the end of next year. So we do have some recommendations following that picture of the rate model and the enterprise fund right there. We're not recommending a rate increase at this time, today, as I stand here in front of you. We're not. But we want to reiterate the strain that is on the enterprise fund right now, the two hundred million dollars over ten years, one hundred and fifteen million of that is towards regulatory costs. Growth costs are impacting there as well, eighty-five million. We do have a funding gap right now from point A to point B, that's still around forty million And quite frankly, that's really unsettling, not just for myself, but the others in the department and I'm sure for some of you as well. Our pay-go strategy, while it's very responsible, it may not be as reasonable as we thought it was maybe a year ago when we look at things like this. Some things you could look at, could we restrict growth? Absolutely, you could restrict growth. But that comes at a cost or, if you take that eighty-five million dollars in the growth costs and you say, we're only gonna give out six hundred permits for residential units this year, well, that's how you could restrict it. But I don't think that's the nature of our community or what we would like to do. So what we've kind of landed on is, we need to look at other options and it may require us to go into debt, to finance, with this picture right here. But we know that's also not a settling comment either. So we do have a few recommendations for you to buy us a little bit of time. The first one, those reserves I talked about, if you look up to the top left, the current state, we talked about four months in emergency reserve and then we're carrying eight million dollars in regulatory in the model. Our recommendation to you is that you enable us, bless you, to move to more of a, an operating reserve with six months in each utility, go down to a million in emergency reserves, and then start spending the regulatory reserves and stop accounting for them in future models. And this is what the rate model shows if we take that approach or you provide us that approval. Now, we still become an overall fund insolvency in twenty twenty-two, but what it does on the left side is it pushes out or pushes further to the right the need to move into our reserves by at least a whole nother year to eighteen months, just by making those few minor adjustments to the way we strategize and we work with our reserve figures. And like I said earlier, you can, this thing talks back to you. So if we wanna tweak this thing some more, we can absolutely do that. But I wanted, I thought it was important to show you this money that we're holding on to in terms of reserves, what it could do for us if we made some tweaks to it. Additionally, while it's not a familiar topic, if we move to a six-month operating reserve, it aligns us to be in a better position to bond if that is a go-forward means or a strategy that we need to pursue. It sets us up more appropriately for that type of situation. Some other things that we're working on that are gonna impact the enterprise fund. Remember last year, we brought to you the sewer assessment fee and we went through and we did a big exercise, we went and talked to BCA and we went and talked to BOMA and we had a focus group. And we came back to you and we showed you after a third-party review what the sewer assessment fee model could do for us. Well, we want, we are currently doing the same thing with the water assessment fee. It has not been touched since two thousand and seven and we're currently in the works with the help, not only internal staff, but also J U B, to update that model. We're gonna send it off for a peer review and then we wanna bring that back to you with those results, given if there is an increase, and come to you with a plan for consideration and potential adoption. Another thing that could potentially impact the enterprise fund, about a year ago, Tom stood here and he talked about fee leveling and that was one of the pieces on the pie chart where we thought potentially there was four million dollars in opportunity there. Well, we're currently working with finance and the community development folks to nail down how we are determining our ERUs. ERUs are tied directly to assessments, which are tied directly to connections. So if an ERU is calculated one way for commercial and a different way for multifamily, there's about three different ways that you can do it that are industry standards, we want to maintain and land on some consistency because those haven't been reviewed for a while as well. So we believe there potentially could be an opportunity to help out with gaining predictability and a justifiable calculation with our ERU. So that is a potential opportunity to improve our fund status as well. And then the last thing, we are currently doing some work to research and identify what indexing our rates and our fees could look like. What we would propose and would bring back to you is that we would like to see index our rates and our fees on a fiscal year basis, October first of every year. We updated our water assessment fee, we just got done with our sewer, we just adjusted rates last year. We're in a perfect position now that we feel we're in a stable place with the fees and the rates to implement an indexing opportunity. So we're gonna go look at, we know that's formulaic. You can't just say we're gonna use the CPI or we're gonna use the construction or the Bureau of Labor Statistics. There's gotta be a formulaic method to work to take into consideration assessments and utility rates. And we wanna do the work to come back and show you what that looks like so that you can consider that. Here's a quick example of what indexing could have done for us. Just take the water assessment fee that we're currently reviewing. It was last touched in two thousand and seven and it was set at seventeen ninety-four. It's still at seventeen ninety-four, but what the column on the right shows is a calculation with the column on the left. So if we would have taken a construction cost index every year, our water assessment fee would be our water assessment fee would be at 2209. If you do out the math, we have not collected, since we have not taken a indexing approach, nearly $1.7 million in just water assessment fees since 2007. And that's just water. We could go back and look at the sewer one, and I know Tom has. But I just wanted to give you one picture of what indexing and the impact it could have on just this one opportunity. So to wrap it up, one, we would like your support to adjust the reserves, to give us some more time. And move that, that circle a little bit to the right to 2018 and leave our reserves alone. Second, we're very serious about indexing our rates. And we'd like to bring back to you what that looks like in terms of a formularic calculation on how that would work with our rates and fees. And then lastly, the work in progress I commented on, the connection fee for water and the fee leveling, we want to bring that work back to you as well, all by the summer of 2015 so we can make some more decisions through your guidance as we move forward And at this time, if you have any questions or comments, I would be happy to hear them and address them as I can.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Byrd.
Mike, on your charts with your costs, indexing, do you, are you figuring in some EPA deals?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, no, sir, we're not.
That brings up another question. The 375 that we, that we charge now for EPA, is that being put in a fund set aside for that or is that just going into your fund to use, general fund?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Byrd, that is just going into the enterprise fund. We are calculating and we are tracking that. It brings us about $110,000 a month, obviously 375 times your sewer counts. So we're tracking that. Is that being fenced? That answer is no.
So what we're putting, we were supposed to be putting that aside so that when we did have EPA things come up, we'd have at least some money to do it. If it's getting thrown in the general fund or in the enterprise fund.
Well, and I would also offer this, Councilman Byrd. We are, and we just had a few good meetings recently about the things that we are looking at tackling and the projects, projects we're working on, capacity at the treatment plant and regulatory compliance. So I feel very safe to say that that 375 is only being spent on regulatory compliance. But to answer your question, there's not a separate pot.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Barry.
I just want to offer a little clarity on that question and comment. The $3.35 was a number that was picked to initially begin saving towards the regulatory requirements, requirements that the EPA is going to be instilling on us. That money is going to the ending fund balance. And to be clear, when we discuss these reserves, there is no separate count for any reserve that we have inside the enterprise fund. We talk about operating reserves, we talk about depreciation reserves, regulatory reserves, emergency reserves. Those are all paper funds. There is no fund that's been designated by the finance department to separate out those. We track those separately in the model. We track those separately in the spreadsheets and in the funds. So Mike is right that there is, it all goes to the, to the fund. But it's all being reprogrammed for, in those, in the case of the $3.35 referred to, all to the regulatory requirements. Keep in mind that the funding gap of $40 million is largely regulatorily driven. So we still haven't even closed that gap. At some point, we may need to possibly increase that contribution to the EPA fund fee, if you will. But at this point in time, there is no separation of funds. All of this money is in one giant fund called the enterprise fund. It's not even segregated between water and wastewater, operations, personnel, maintenance, capital. It's all one fund. We divide it up on paper so we can track it and monitor each of those subsets, which, and that's how we essentially are able to describe where the money's coming and going to. But essentially, it is and always has been one giant fund. If I could also add one other comment, I don't know if you caught on, but we're making a recommendation as a department to increase the operating reserve from four months to six months. Now, that might seem counterintuitive if we're trying to reduce the overall reserve amounts. The reason we're doing that is because we feel that it would be wise to begin to position ourselves for debt financing, meaning to take on a bond. And typically, bonds will require, or bonding companies or agencies will require a minimum of six months' reserve. And that's why we want to set that aside sooner than later so that if we end up having to bond, we are not scrambling to find another three or four million dollars to come up with the difference between a four and a six-month operating reserve. To counter that impact or effect, the recommendation to begin to spend the regulatory reserve that we've been saving for seems prudent. We have knowledge of the types of regulatory projects that are going to be required. Why not spend that money that we've been saving for to spend? Why hold it aside and strain the fund any longer? And then, in addition, the emergency reserve, we're making a request to reduce that to 1 million because we feel like there is some protection offered in a greater operating reserve so that we wouldn't need to overstress the fund by having a six-month operating reserve and a $5 million regulatory reserve. So we're pivoting a little bit by reprogramming some of those funds, freeing up the regulatory reserve, buying ourselves a little bit more time as we refine the regulatory projects and the growth-related projects in both water and wastewater and modify as well future rates and fees potentially with indexing or other modifications that seem suitable at the time. So I'll pause there.
Any, yes, Mr. Kavner.
Mike, off-the-wall question, and it, it kind of pertains to your presentation. Why not increase rates now?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, good question, definitely. And we actually had the discussion multiple times. We're very cognizant of the tolerance on our ratepayers. Let's say we took a rate increase of 1% to 2% just for water and wastewater base and usage fees. We took a 2%, 2% inflationary last year. The reality is that compounds out to not even $4 million of additional revenue. So if you want to add another 1% to 2% on that, you might get another $3 to $4 million in revenue over eight to 10 years. Those small increases, which are tolerable by our ratepayers, maybe they won't have much of an impact on our fund, quite frankly. Now, a larger jump, which we know isn't favorable, and the timing's never good, would significantly adjust our position in the fund. But that obviously comes with some risk and a tolerance level. It has been discussed. We're trying to be cognizant of timeliness of that and then the amount also.
Are you looking at how that offsets what you would do incrementally now and having your fee leveling versus targeting perhaps the, the bonding alternative at some point and what that would mean to the rates versus a year-over-year with the fee leveling and the difference of each of those approaches?
Madam Mayor, we've had that discussion, but we haven't, we haven't done the work to see what that comparable looks like in terms of bonding for a certain portion. But then also incremental increases either to the rates or assessment fees, what that looks like over year-over-year. We want to do that work. We will do that work and can bring that back to you. But no, I don't have an answer for, for you on that right now. These little incremental things, as I mentioned, just aren't getting the steps we need towards a $40 million gap.
But are those little incremental increases, would those pay for a bond that is spread out over a 20-year period? For, for that gap and what you need.
Madam Mayor, we're not sure. We haven't run bond calculations yet. I can tell you that if we have to bond, it's going to cost a whole lot more than if we could finance it ourselves because we'll have to pay the bond origination fee, we're going to be paying interest, and then you got to pay the principal back within the time period. So it's going to cost a lot more. The reality, Mr. Kavner has asked a very good question, and we struggled with this internally. And to be quite frank with you, it's difficult for us to stand before you with this fiscal problem and not make a recommendation for rate increase. But we're, but the primary reason for us not doing that is a couple-fold. One, we are very sensitive that we've just asked the ratepayers and the developing community for increases within the last six months or so. Two, we're not sure that even if we continued for the next eight years or so with rate increases, we could still close the gap. Now, we'll get closer to closing the gap. But part of what we need to gain in understanding from you folks tonight is what the tolerance is for that indexing. For example, indexing works over time via compounding, right? But if the time horizon is shortened, the compounding period is less, the indexing impact is less. So if we were going to try to close this $40 million gap in the eight-to-10-year horizon we've been communicating with you over this last year, it would be most wise to take your biggest increments first and your smaller increments as you go because they'll have the biggest compounding effect year-over-year, which means maybe in October, you take a 5% increase. The year following that, you take a 4% increase. The year following that, you take a 3% increase. The year following that, we regage and we say, oh, maybe, maybe we can lower it, maybe we keep it the same, maybe it has to go back up. We haven't done any of those calculations today. I, I can't tell you what kind of impact that would make. We've done some rough napkin, you know, kind of back-of-the-napkin estimates. Like Mike said, we calculated this morning that about a 1% increase in water rates, sewer rates, water impact, or what we call assessments, and wastewater assessments. So we'd have to raise all of those, the two fees and the two rates by 1%. This is about $250,000 every year. So over a 10-year period, that'd get us $2.5 million. Well, that's not a whole lot if you're closing $10 million gap. But if you took 5% in one year, now you've got essentially $12.5 million over that, that 10-year period that you've closed with one 5% rate increase, as long as you took it, you know, very soon. Then if you added four to that, you know, maybe, maybe you closed it another 10 million because you got eight years with that 4% increase. So now you're maybe down to, you know, what does that get us? Maybe less than half of the challenge just by taking a 5% and a 4%. And this is, I'm, I'm just going to be clear, these are back-of-the-envelope calculations. I can't stand behind these calculations right now. But it looks something like that. So the question is, is it doable? It's somewhat related on your tolerance for how much of an increase and when we could make in some of these fees and rates. Certainly, it would be far, far cheaper for us to pay all of this without having to go into debt, far cheaper. Because if we took a $30 million bond, you'd probably be paying 60 back with the bond origination fee, with the interest, with the principal over that period of time. Granted, you'd have 20 years, maybe 30 instead of the eight to 10. So the overall rate increase could potentially be less, but I wouldn't suspect it to be a whole lot less.
Well, and Tom, I think we all know that, but it's the difference between looking at a 20-year house loan and a shorter term. It's what you can afford.
Right.
And it's what your citizens can afford. And at some point, you add, you make the decision to spread that cost over time because it's what can be tolerated. And, and I know there's extra costs. Anyone that owns a house knows that. But at, at some point, you also have to understand what is that stress or that breaking point of your ratepayers? And you're right, we, just at the tail end of a, a large increase and what is tolerable? And, and at this point, I don't know of that 200 million that was 160 million last year or 180 million that just now has increased. How much of that is due to growth and how much of that is the regulatory? And, and how do we best communicate that? It's, it's kind of that, what, what kind of decision points does this council need to make some of those decisions? And, and I guess another question that's out there lingering for me is we still haven't gotten our permit. We think we know what it is. I know your team is still busy trying to figure out, is there any other solution that maybe doesn't have the same cost impact? But is it a total drop dead? Is the EPA totally, you have to have that at year nine and in operation a whole year prior to? Is there flexibility to that? Because certainly, we all know by doing math, the longer we can continue to collect without having to build, compounds that dollar even more. So I, I guess I still have those questions too.
Madam Mayor, I, we have many of the same questions, which is why we, we need time to work through these. Now, do we have a final permit? No, we don't. Do we have a draft permit? Yes, we do. Has the EPA told us that draft permit is all but certain? Yes, they have. We're waiting on DEQ's compliance schedule. Once that gets issued and the EPA certifies it, the 10 years is going to be the 10 years now.
Well, I know, and the longer they delay, the more time we have.
Absolutely. Which is why it's prudent to have these conversations now. And, you know, this idea of indexing makes a lot of sense because what it does is at least, at a minimum, regardless of what other decisions we have to make, it keeps the pace of the rates and fees in line with market and economic conditions. That's, that's what it does. It, it might not be enough, right? I mean, we could say cost of living, CPI, you know, construction cost index or whatever says it should be 2% over this next year. That might not be enough. We might have to do more. And the reality is if we have to bond, I can tell you that we're going to have to raise rates and fees to bond for these kinds of things as well. So I think what we're suggesting here tonight is these are going to get increasingly more difficult, these discussions, and we recognize that. But we think that we can begin to position ourselves with the time that's on our side, as long as we make some prudent decisions today, get your support for indexing and allowing us to run the model with the impacts of indexing on it to show you, is it that significant of a difference or not? How certain is it that we might have to bond versus being able to take care of this situation by self-funding it? We're not completely clear on all of that just yet. So we think that making the adjustments in the reserves that we've talked about, which is really just a paper exercise, there's nothing that needs to happen. It just changes the inputs to the model. And allowing us to bring back to you information and impacts on indexing. We could take a standard number and say, maybe it's 2% a year because that seems to be about what the numbers going historically show, and show you what kind of impact, the impact that has. And then we could run another scenario in the model that says, well, what if you took it as a 5, 4, 3, 2, and then held it at 2? We could run another scenario that said other sorts of things. Meanwhile, while all this is going on, my Meanwhile, while all this is going on, my staff will tell you that they are not sleeping at night, same as me, because we are scrubbing and scrubbing and scrubbing these projects, these estimates, all of these things. A lot of us live here too. We, we don't want any impacts. We don't want these impacts to, to impact our wallets either. So we're working diligently. I can assure you that. But at the end of the day, we're, we're, we don't have all of the pieces yet till we find that we can communicate with certainty about what is going and what isn't going to happen. We can tell you based on the modeling, based on the estimates we have today, based on what the EPA is telling us today, we have, we have big challenges ahead of us. But we still have a little time on our side to work these through. So that's part of the conversation tonight.
Okay, are, are we all just burnout or?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylan?
Not interested in bonding. To me, that, that just basically, the rates are going to have to go up anyway to pay that and it's a waste of money. I'd like to know what see, see the whole, the whole math trail of what would it take to get where we need to be now as far as increments? And if we didn't do that, the alternative which you're talking about, which is bonding, what would the rates have to increase to pay for that and what is a long-term effect? You know, I understand needing more time, but I don't really want to just pass this off to the next council or, you know, to somebody else to have to deal with this way down the road and then have, end up with a huge rate increase when that happens either. So I'd love to see those numbers. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? I think Councilman Mylan has got exactly the kind of recommendation we would need and want so that we can bring you back that information. We want to caveat that so we're not running endless model runs. I would say if you would agree as a council with her recommendation, we certainly could. If we caveated it with some basic assumptions, say for example, what would a forty million dollar bond or a twenty million dollar bond look like? So we're not running because there are scenarios in between both extremes, right? We could take some increases. We can close the gap a little bit. We could take a smaller bond if we had, I mean, so there's an endless number of runs that we could do. So to make sure that we get you what you're looking for, if you could give us some more specificity on what type of scenarios you'd like us to run or give us the latitude to bring you two or three, we can handle it that way as well. And then give you that information. You can direct us accordingly afterwards.
Tom or Mike, either one, I'm, I'm, from your comments, I'm confused about the money that's there. We, we have, we have a budget, okay? And in the budget, there's certain categories of funds that are budgeted. Part of those funds are operating reserves. Is that just a paper number or is that number actually carried continually year after year and that money is there and not in the reserves? Or does the reserve number we see include that money as well?
Do you want me to say that? I can take it.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Round, Roundtree. It is paper, but it's reflected and carried in the model. So you can see and we're very cognizant, cognizant of when we get close to those reserves. And that's kind of what led to the reserve option that we provided earlier is we're so close to dipping into the reserves. If we could adjust our reserves to make it more manageable, then we wouldn't be dipping into them for about another year and a half to two, which would enable us to do some work as the other council members have suggested and come back to you.
So the answer to my question is that money is the reserve? Or is that money that's reserved for those purposes?
Madam Mayor?
To me, there's a difference.
There is a difference. So the reserves that we've set aside in the model include all of the reserves that you required or requested us to carry years ago. Regulatory reserve, all that stuff's included in that.
Okay.
It is a paper set aside. It's on a spreadsheet. It's just earmarked on paper, but it's real money. It exists in our fund. But it's not separated out in that fund. So what we would be doing by making this recommendation, if you concurred.
Well, 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 we, it's not separated out of, out of what fund?
It's not separate, separated out of the enterprise fund. Enterprise fund is like just one.
But, but when we see the reserve fund that consists of carryover and all of that stuff, is it in there or is it?
There's no separate fund.
Still all one?
It's all one. Yeah, it's all one. The Finance Department did not segregate the fund into multiple funds as you're suggesting. It's all one fund, which is why the model is so critical because it forces that on us to make sure we know what is the lowest limit that we can take the undesignated ending fund balance to preserve the total balance with reserves in it. Does that make sense?
Okay, and that's, and that ends up with with your suggestion about operating reserves and, and regulatory reserve. Doing that yields a million too?
Councilman Roundtree, essentially what it looks like is right now, we're carrying, if I'm not mistaken, and Mike can correct me, he's looked at the numbers most recently, about seventeen million dollars in reserves today on paper. So when we plug into model, we say if our ending fund balance, let's say, was thirty million dollars, let's just say in the enterprise fund, the end, total ending fund balance is thirty million dollars, we subtract out seventeen and we set it aside. That means we only have allowed that difference to use to cover capital costs, to cover operating costs, those types of things. What we're suggesting is instead of setting aside that seventeen million, let's reduce that to ten million by allowing us to spend the regulatory reserve we're saving, we've been saving for, which seems completely reasonable since we know the regulatory projects we have to work on, why don't we just access the money we've been setting aside to work on those regulatory projects now? But also by reducing it to ten million, we'd reposition the reserves and to allow for six months operating, which is essentially your eight and a half or nine million and one million emergency. So the overall reserve total amount would be ten million set aside instead of seventeen. That seven that we've just freed up and reprogrammed to, to utilize for operations and capital and all of that would be the difference that gets us that extra year. Does that make sense?
No, I don't get, I, where do you get the ten million? You're talking about six months in each utility of eight point five million.
That's total for both utilities.
That's for both of them?
That's correct.
Not how that reads, six, six months in each utility.
Which equals approximately eight point five. Sorry for the confusion. That's what's intended by the.
Because that's where I got to seventeen million.
Understood, understood.
All right. Okay.
Councilman, our current, the, the way we're currently set up is five point six of four months. That carries both utilities. This would be, and you're right, that little squiggly line, which I don't really know what you call it, that's probably not a good descriptor of what it really means.
Some would be okay or, you know, whatever, or equals or whatever, but it doesn't communicate. It didn't communicate.
So, but, and, and Tom is right, it would be around ten million. We'd go from about seventeen, which is currently in the model for reserves to around ten. So you'd essentially be releasing that seven million first to utilize.
Mr. President? Is it your position that reducing our reserves from seventeen million to ten improves our bonding capacity and rating potential? It seems to be the exact opposite.
No, so let's, let's make this clear. Right now, we have three different types of reserves that we're holding. An operating reserve of, what did we say, five point six million or something to that effect?
Yes.
We have a five million dollar emergency reserve. And then we have a reserve that has been growing year over year based on the council's approval years ago to set aside two million for unknown regulatory problems that we know we're going to have. And not, I shouldn't say problems, but projects that we know we're going to have at some point in time because we didn't have a permit four years ago. We had no idea. But we knew because EPA had been telling us, along with the other jurisdictions, it's going to be bad. So we just said, well, let's set aside some money for that. That's grown now to eight million. What we're saying essentially here is that we want to free up that eight million.
I understand that.
Which would leave essentially ten million left. But on paper, instead of saying five million as a regulatory reserve and five point six million as an operating reserve, we would move the money that we'd need to cover six months of operating reserves, any amount of around eight and a half million so that we were positioned on paper with a six month operating reserve instead of a four month operating reserve. And then the emergency reserve essentially goes down to one million. That's self-imposed, by the way. This emergency reserve is something that you said, hey, we need to have a rainy day fund. But in reality, if we're able to finance this all ourselves and stuff, we, if, if we can show that we don't need a bond, we can take those reserves back down to four months and free up three, three million more dollars. We don't need that. But if you do need a bond, you're going to have to show that you have six months operating reserve. Now, if you want to hold ten and call six of it this and four of it that, or three of it this and seven of it that, or all ten of it this, makes no difference. They're going to look and say, how much money are you holding to cover payments on debt in the event, you know, you default and for how long?
Madam Mayor, all I'm saying is that what an underwriter would see is that has changed from seventeen million to ten million effectively. Sure, regardless of how you, how you categorize your three types of reserves, you have available reserves of seventeen and those are going to ten. Whether it's right or wrong, I'm saying it seems like an underwriter, that would have a big impact on bonding capacity.
Yeah, I, I think they prob, I, I mean, I don't know, Councilman Borton, the reality is that it is very typical for a government agency to hold six months of reserves in order to qualify for a bond issuance. And whether we took, you know, a twenty five million dollar set aside and reduced it to whatever is, is, I guess in my opinion, irrelevant. What is relevant is that we can prove that we have the money we need set aside to cover a potential default situation, which in their case is six months operating reserve typically. So I don't think that it puts you in any worse or better spot that if you said I went from seventeen to ten, as long as you can still prove up, you've got six months of operating reserve. I mean, the whole point to going after a bond is because you need the money. So if you go from seventeen to ten, but you can still cover your six months operating reserve, I mean, it goes hand in hand. The point is, well, yeah, you're, you don't have enough money at this point in time to cover the expenses. So that's why you're going after a bond, but you've responsibly set aside the, the six months worth of reserve and then some in this case, which would satisfy in all likelihood those requirements from the bond companies to have the six months set aside. So I see where you're going and philosophically, hey, bond company, we went from seventeen to ten, whoa, that's a problem. What? That's the whole reason you bond because your ending fund balances are decreasing. So the proper point here, I think, is when do you bond? Do you bond now? At seventeen million, you want to bond with seventeen million in reserves or do you want to bond with a six month reserve? You're just going to borrow money that you've already got in the bank that you don't need to hold as a set aside. It just doesn't seem in my estimation prudent to do that. But it could be done.
Madam Mayor? The, the reason for the comment and the question was, is there was a remark that increasing the operating reserve to six months would strengthen the position for future bonding, which I don't think is the case. I don't think it hurts it definitely, right? Because we had six months today in light of the emergency plus operating. I think it's neutral at best. So if the thought of this types of transition improved our position, I'm not certain that's the case. I'm not saying it necessarily hurts it. To what your point, we had six months effective operating reserves today. We have more than that. So making that transfers effectively a neutral position with regards to bonding capacity. Is that accurate?
I, I see your, I see how you're coming up with that and it is accurate, what you're suggesting. It, it's almost moot though because really we call these what we want and we set them aside in the form that we want them. So I would say yes, technically you're correct. What we would like to do in the model though is set aside six months because it's a separate line item in the model so that we've, we've set that aside and then allow the emergency reserve. It's just shifting money from one of those reserves to another reserve and then freeing up the third reserve to begin spending it on regulatory projects. So.
Anything further from council?
Madam Mayor, so you're still looking for direction on where to go with the, what numbers we would like to see? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Hey, there was an option of give you leniency to bring back several different scenarios. And at this point, five hours into our meeting, I am all in favor of that.
Me too. I would like to, as long as one of those options is no bond.
Absolutely.
I heard, yeah, several.
The plan is to address all your concerns and bring back multiple scenarios that would show you the calculations of, you know, bond compared to raising rates over a multiple year pronged approach, closing the gap, adjusting our reserves and things like that. So we can absolutely bring those back to you. The indexing is one thing that we really, it, it's going to take some work to put into that and we'd really like support if that work is done that at least it would be considered for potential adoption come around in October. Now, it would, it would require a, if it was implemented, a, a rate increase and also a, a fee increase. But from our standpoint, that is, when you implement something like that, let's say you implement it and you sign it in for three to five years, then every October, rather than going after a true all-out rate or fee increase, it would just be common practice to take the indexing. So that's the work we want to bring back to you as well.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bird.
Mike, do you have a hard copy of your model and how you guys do this that I could get?
We will get you a picture of that, yes.
Please, if you would.
Would you like that? Just, I can bring it up, put it in your, your box?
Please, Mike. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything further from council in addition to what Mike just summarized for us?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon. Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, just before we part, not to be a wet blanket, I know we're all excited to move on. The reserve discussion, do you want more time to think about that? Do you want to allow us to make those changes? Because when we run these model scenarios, it will be important for us to plug those numbers in. If you want us to hold seventeen million in reserves, it's going to change the model runs. If you want us to hold ten million or five million or call it this or call it that, it will change these scenarios. So we need some direction on how exactly the council feels on where the reserves should be so that we can get you accurate data on the model scenarios that we're promising you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Bird?
Ten million to me, Tom. I don't think it's going to make a hell of a means difference with a bonding company and a little bit I know about bonding. It's, you know, if you've got too much reserve, they're going to wonder why you want to bond.
I'm, I'm okay with the scenario presented as far as using the reserves in any fund. I think if we've got the money, we ought to spend it.
I, I do think at some point, we really do need a, a bond council to come in and, and talk about bonding and the pros and cons and, and just to get educated about what that is. Yes, Mr. Gordon?
To throw a wet blanket on the wet blanket, if there's going to be an expenditure of previously allocated funds to reserves for regulatory matters, right, then I'd want to see how tapping into those reserves is used to directly resolve pending regulatory issues, which I'm sure is the intent, but let's tie it together. If, if the previous councils had said, we're going to set aside these funds. If, if the previous councils had said, we're going to set aside these funds to address
Amen.
particular regulatory issues, if we were to make a decision like this, let's see how that would
Well, the whole idea behind setting that money aside was in anticipation for the EPA regulatory requirements. And, and so, as I think Tom said, we would be using those reserves for exactly the p, the purpose that we started putting those aside, so.
Madam Mayor.
Just a little short, excuse me.
Mr. Byrd.
I, I agree in the fact that, why can't we take that 375 and use it as not an impact fee? But, and, and then it, it states right there that that money is only used for EPA deals. That, that's what, the reason I'm thinking about that, Tom, is that's what we sold our ratepayers on.
Yeah.
That that was for EPA only.
That's exactly right. So, Madam Mayor, with your blessing, you will have to recall, six months ago, we talked about this and we provided you the models for the sewer assessment.
Are you saying we have to recall that?
I'm hoping you do, because it's going to be a long night if you don't. I'm assuming you do. When we brought that to you six months ago and we said, hey, we had this, this sewer assessment model, was calculated based upon the inputs of growth, growth impact on the regulatory demands, all these other sorts of things, and we set the assessment based upon that information. That assessment money goes for growth and growth's impact on regulations, and that's it. Everything else is going for the regulatory improvements that we have to make at the treatment plant, which is why ratepayers are paying for that. So by that very token, by that very modeling, what we're saying is that growth is paying growth's proportionate impact and share, and the ratepayers are having to pay their costs for the regulatory compliance components. So by the very nature of that segregation and modeling, we are by default, whether we move this 8 million in the, in the ending fund balance to regulatory projects to start now, or the 3.75 that we're taking ratepayers, it's all going to the regulatory challenge that we have right now. Because growth's already got theirs accounted for. They're paying for it in a higher assessment. They went up, what, $900? That's, they're already paying for that. Our ratepayers haven't caught up yet. Our ratepayers paid 2% last year and $3.75, and it is not enough. That's what we're saying here. So I hope that helps, because the growth part, we've already addressed, except for the growth part on water, which is what Mike alluded to earlier, that hasn't been touched since 2007. We think that a similar outcome is going to be realized, maybe not to the degree it did in the sewer assessments. But that work still needs to be done on the water side. But in the sewer, I can assure you that 375 and the regulatory reserves are going towards regulatory projects. And we don't have anything else for them to go towards. Growth's paying there, so hopefully that gives you some comfort.
Madam Mayor.
It gives me a lot of comfort in the midst of this conversation. Ms. Mylum.
Sorry. So, Tom, the 375, is that, was that, remind me if that was calculated in the 40 million dollar gap that we have? Was that before or after? I was, the 375, we still had 40 million after that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so once we move 7 million, then will it be, basically, your numbers are going to start with like a $33 million?
No.
No.
No. We always anticipated that that 8 million, which will be 10 million next year, which will be 12 million next year as set aside, was going to be used for regulatory. So we counted on that money. What we're saying is let us have it now. That's all we're saying here. How long, how long do you want us to save it before we can use it? That's all we're saying by moving that regulatory reserve. If you want us to continue to grow that regulatory reserve, our model results will show you that we go insolvent much sooner than we even need to show, because we've set it aside. For what? We set aside for regulatory problems. Why aren't we using it for regulatory projects? That, that's all we're saying here. Let us use the fun now that we know.
I was hoping that was going to bring down that.
Nope, it's already accounted for.
Not seen as a revenue source.
I wish, I wish we hadn't, but, yeah, it's already accounted for. Sorry. Now I get to be a wet blanket twice.
I'm not going to touch that one.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I think you're clear on.
Just one more clarification. Just use the 10 million rather than the 17 that we have proportionate, the way I showed it in there. We'll be back to you with more indexing information, if we can get your support on that with some scenarios and the calculations, and then continue the work we currently have going on.
Yes. Now, take your model and go home. No.
Yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the prop, Mike. You lived up to your position.
Oh, yes.
Okay, council, I am going to call a break. You can go and grab something, and then we'll just continue on.
We can do that.
We can do that.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, you have your updates.
We can do that. We come back out.
I'm good.
Do you, do you want to do that?
Let's, let's go.
Just go take a break.
All right, yeah, because we might talk another hour on ACHD.
All right.
Yeah, cuz we scheduled, we might talk another hour on ACHD.
All right.
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 Okay.
Well, we'll go ahead and continue with item 7H under our legal department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll try to keep this under an hour. The resolution you have in front of you is to begin the process to transfer property. It's our common routine that we've done previously on other projects. This is the property that is immediately west of City Hall across Meridian Road. There's a portion that has been requested by the Highway District for future right-of-way along Railroad Street. The current resolution says there's no compensation for that, and we're still in discussion with them about the compensation piece. They have, did have a conversation today with planning on other requirements that they may have, and I think we're gonna probably be able to have those all worked out. But, and there may be compensation for this particular parcel at the transfer, which means we'll then amend the resolution and the ordinance that we ultimately bring to you. But, all this does is set in motion the process of doing the advertising for the public hearing that's necessary before we can transfer it to any, to a public entity, no matter whether they compensate us or not. So, we can go ahead and move that forward, we can begin that process and get the noticing done for the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Zaromba.
Aren't we talking about property that we just bought from them?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, council members, yes, we are talking about property that we did purchase from them. And I did have a conversation with their council last week, and if you recall, we have an agreement with the Ada County Highway District to transfer properties to them at no cost, but we did also build into that agreement that there are gonna be occasions that are kind of anomalies to the routine, and this is one of them. So, they're, they're certainly willing, if they need to, to compensate us back for that property. If we need to do it in some other form, that's something we can discuss, but if it's just simply a straight financial transfer or transaction, they can, they're willing to do that too, so.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, Bill, when would we have that conversation?
Well, we'll have that conversation before we bring it back to you for final approval. So, we will come back to you with a recommendation on whatever the, the outcome of that discussion is.
And, and Council, I would say after this was brought to our attention, I did email Director Wong, and he did say that ACHD will not be charging Meridian for any right-of-way use, and ACHD will most likely be sending, I said, a check. As well, that ACHD will not require Meridian to remove two of the driveway access points that this project would have looked like it originally was gonna be asked to do, and that they would coordinate with the city regarding the strategy on the landscape buffer that will block those two entries. So, they're very interested in working with us. They do apologize for, for any concern that this has caused, because it was, this is kind of backwards. Why did we purchase this and now we're being asked to give it back? And it was just an oversight that Mr. Price is working with Bill to unravel, and he just wanted to give assurances because on behalf of Councilman Roundtree and I, I, I did ask him last week for clarity. Mr. Zaromba, that's a question that immediately came to mind, so thank you. Okay, you do have in front of you council resolution 15-1063. Okay, you do have in front of you council resolution 15-1063.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve resolution number 15-1063.
Motion in a second. And, and another indicator by hand, but Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zaromba.
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Item 7I is City Council Liaison Committee Updates. And, let's start with Council, Councilman Cavanagh, as he doesn't have a plate in front of him, so.
Sure, but unfortunately, I, I will be brief. My, my.
That's unfortunate. I think it's very.
For whoever's next, though. My, my full-time endeavors have kept me from meeting with staff today, and so we have rescheduled for later on this week. We have not met since our last workshop session.
Let's see, in the Police Department, the construction project is 70% complete, and the public lobby, they're hoping to have it open on Thursday, they're coming to inspect it. And Public Safety Academy is in full swing, and the third week starts this Thursday. In the Clerk's office, the permitting is in full swing. It is that time of year. So, that's about it, I think.
Mr. Byrd.
Madam Mayor. I don't have to tell you about the Finance Department, they give us a 45-minute show today. The Parks Department, as if any of you drove out on Stratford and Water Tower, that the Bark Park is coming along, they're getting everything done. They got all the Dalmatians' dirt hauled out so they can start packing and doing stuff. I think curb and gutter and some sidewalks even, might have been late, I haven't been out there for a day or two, but they were getting ready to do that, so. They had a bicycle tour the other night on their parks ways, which I guess was very successful, so. They're just keeping up, and the parks absolutely look beautiful. The tennis courts are gonna have the ribbon cutting.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth of this month, isn't it? So, and they, they look fantastic. I was out there the other day and walked around, and they were being used like you couldn't believe. That is fantastic. Anyway, the Parks Department's doing a great job, so is Finance.
Well, and I would just add, we had probably the nation's largest Easter egg hunt in Kleiner Park, and even though there were some, some things that can be improved upon next year, our teams did gather to debrief and, and talk about what they might be able to do differently, but it was wildly successful, and just a huge gift to our community and to our families, and certainly the region beyond. So, I just wanna tip my hat to our police. We had two bicycle police officers there to certainly Nancy and, and the team that worked with the TUP on this. Again, like I said, they have met to talk about how, what kind of improvements can be made next year, because we just imagine it's gonna just get more popular. And it seemed like there was a good time had by all.
The kids.
At least the kids, that's true. And, you know, it's, it's disturbing, but you, you just cannot regulate people that are irresponsible. We had some parents just dropping their kids off, six-year-olds.
No.
To, to go and hunt Easter eggs. They had a designated pickup point, but I don't know how they tell time. You know, there were, what, I think, 20-plus kids that were reconnected with their parents pretty rapidly. But, you know, if you've been out there, it seems like someone yells "Go," and, and, you know, all bets are off, because those kids are scrambling, and parents are scrambling after eggs.
Candy, yeah.
Yeah, so, Mr. Roundtree.
Madam Mayor, the mayor and I have had our budget discussion about what will end up in the budget book, so that's complete at this point. Probably the, the highlight of the year is there's a bunch of villages that have their folks returning, so the legislature is over. The legislature did not necessarily do no harm. They, they passed a couple bills that take away more duties and functions of cities, but I guess there's not much we can do about that, other than hopefully we can come together with our other cities as they move forward with the, I don't know what, what it was they passed, but a study or an evaluation of urban renewal districts that supposedly is gonna happen between now and the next session. So, that should be something that we need to keep an eye on and probably participate in as best we can. But, they're, they're gone with the exception of possibly being called back for the childcare issue that they created. The big issue for us is that they did pass a $96 million transportation bill. Caleb and I had a conversation with ITD last week with respect to transportation, and a new program they have, it's called Strategic Initiatives Program, that is going to be funded at a level of about $20 million. They're anticipating that's coming from the new legislation that will split 50/50, any monies over and above the projected budget will be distributed between transportation and the general fund. So, they're thinking about $20 million a year. We will have a project in there for Meridian. There'll be a project from Eagle to Locust Grove on Shenden to compete in that program. The program is, consists of allowing each of the six districts in ITD to, to have a million dollars to put together projects that can compete for the remaining, remainder of that 20 million. So, there's about $14 million in the competition to be spread around the state for projects of merit that deal with economic development, safety, and, and some of the other elements that ITD has in their strategic plan. So, that's coming up. We just sent a letter to ITD. I, I think the mayor may have signed it. If not, she's at least reading it and maybe modifying it. The letter to ITD saying we support that Shenden Initiative project. And, and I made an offer to ITD, much as the offer we made with ACHD about we need to partner together to make these things come to all of our benefit. And I suggested that if they needed some extra support analytically or planning-wise, that the city would assist in that, in their applications amongst themselves, trying to get these projects, and then that one or any projects in the future. And they seem to be receptive to start thinking that, yeah, maybe we all ought to be playing together and working together more closely to, for the benefit of the citizens in our area. Anyway, that's, that's what I've got. Press on with the good work you've been doing, all of you.
And, and thank you, Mr. President. I, I appreciate you and Caleb meeting with ITD, and, and it sounds like it was a fruitful discussion. Just one thing from the outcome of the legislature that's not for sure yet. We're hoping for a veto of the CBD oil that they, they passed. There's a lot of question to that, and it will have a fiscal input or impact, regardless of what the sponsor said. We're waiting to hear from the governor and what he plans, but I will tell you that a majority of our representatives voted against making that legal, listening to what the law enforcement concerns, and certainly adhering to a resolution they passed two years ago saying we will not legalize marijuana in any form. And we did have a couple that did support it, which was disappointing. But, we're waiting to see what happens with that, because it will have an impact on our police department, if that does go into law, so.
Have an impact on your kids too. Don't kid yourself.
Exactly. Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor, most of the focus has been on the Fire Department, been meeting with the chief, had several meetings with the chief, with some of his staff, walking through the draft budget presentation, and then also the upcoming work on service-level standards that is gonna come before us to give them some clear direction as part of their strategic planning process of what are the concrete metrics that we're gonna seek the Fire Department to meet. Response time being one of the, the more objective measurables that's gonna be part of that. Tied, woven into the budget discussion and woven into what this council and the mayor will be comfortable with on some of those particular metrics was a detailed discussion that continues on overtime and staffing and, and the ways overtime can and cannot be managed, what tools there are there. And that will also come before us as, as part of the budget and perhaps before, because it ties into some of those performance metrics that, that we're gonna give direction and want the Fire Department to meet. So, really good discussions that, that are ongoing.
Thank you. Mr. Zaromba.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As liaisons, I have the legal department, and they keep trucking on, doing what they do well and serving the city well. The other one is Public Works Department. We've been spending quite a bit of time working on budget issues, both this year and next year, budget issues. You heard the fruits of several of those discussions tonight. What you didn't hear about was about a two-and-a-half-hour meeting that we had last Friday to discuss next year's enhancements, so. Public Works is a big department, and there's a lot going on, and it makes a lot of difference to us and to the citizens, so there's a lot to do there. And they also are handling it well, but there's some big expenses to be talked about in the future. Valley Regional Transit is pushing forward of the plans to come up with a public transit 101 subject, probably available by next fall. And also during the summer, they will be looking at restructuring the service that they have. So, that's gonna be some extra planning work on, on their behalf. And that's about it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
On the subject of VRT, there, there is some rumor afoot that NAPA is contemplating pulling out of, matching the federal funds for transit. If that was the case, probably the system in Caldwell, NAPA, and Meridian will go away. And I, I don't know if that's a serious conversation that's going on in their budget process, or if that's just a rumor, but that, that will affect our budget if that were to happen.
True.
Okay, well, thank you for those updates. I, I do wanna make sure that you all have Thursday, April 30th, on your calendars for the prayer breakfast that will be held at the West Data School District Administrative Offices, as usual, at the popular hour of 6:45 a.m. So, hopefully you do have that on, on your calendar.
Be watching the sun rise over the Sea of Cortez. I'm sorry I won't be here.
I think I wanna go there. So, I would entertain council, if, oh, any future meeting topics. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we go into executive session as Prito State Code 672345, 1C and 1D.
Second.
I'll ask you a second to adjourn into executive session. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Councilmember Roundtree.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Zaromba.
Aye.